Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, everyone is signed in just outside the door. Ensure that your name is written legibly so that we can understand it and write it out. This evening, our session is recorded, so if you can keep your sidebar conversations to a minimum to none. And when it is your turn to speak, if you please speak with clarity and actually state your name during your time of speaking. Of course, you will engage the chair that time and the chair or superintendent may be in between the six. At this time, I'd like our board secretary to please call the roll. I like to call today's rescheduled regular school board meeting to order at 6:00 PM, February 23rd, 2015. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Dr. President. Here, President. Howard G. Jones. The God. Allen.
Here.
Ms. Jones is walking into the room. If you can all please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't see the picture. We can say the pledge again just for... Yes, so we're going to go ahead. We're going to read before we... Just want to share a little bit about you. Okay. I just have a few things here about Arabella. We didn't get her by old time, but she gave me a few things about her that I'm going to talk about. Her name is Arabella Gretthei Gretthei. She's a student at Rickover High School. I'm sorry, Rickover Junior High. And she lives with her mom and dad. She has one brother and one sister. What's your teacher's name? She's called Rickover. A classroom teacher. Ms. Palmer is her teacher. She is in the seventh grade, and she's a game player. She loves to play games. Let's give her a round of applause. Then we're going to do it again. You'll lead us this time. We need a practice run, so...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to take your hand. At least her picture. Right. Yeah. So... I just want to make sure you're comfortable. All right, right here. Ready? One, two, three. Oh, very good. All right, I'll be honest with you. It's just hard to have such a true... Things will... What's it? Yeah. I think one hour. Can you give it to her? Oh, she's still... How about pictures? All right, moving on to item three. Oath of office and seating of appointed board member Mrs. Maxine Towers. Get on my right hand and lean after me. I, Maxine Towers.
I, Maxine Towers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of member of the Board of Education.
The duties of the office of member of the Board of Education.
Of school district 168.
Of school district 168.
In accordance with the Constitution.
In accordance with the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of?
The Constitution of?
The State of Illinois.
The State of Illinois.
And the laws of?
And the laws of?
The State of Illinois.
The State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear that?
I further swear that.
I shall respect taxpayers' interests.
I shall respect taxpayers' interests.
By serving as a faithful?
By serving as a faithful.
Protector of the school district's assets.
Protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect?
I shall encourage and respect.
The free expression of opinion?
The free expression of opinion.
By my fellow board members?
By my fellow board members.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
While respecting the privacy?
While respecting the privacy.
Of students and employees.
Of students and employees.
I shall recognize?
I shall recognize.
That a board member has no legal authority?
That a board member has no legal authority.
As an individual?
As an individual.
And that decisions can be made?
And that decisions can be made.
Only by a majority vote?
Only by a majority vote.
At a board, at a public board meeting?
At a public board meeting.
And?
And?
I shall abide?
I shall abide.
By majority decisions of the board?
By majority decisions of the board.
While retaining the right?
While retaining the right.
To seek changes?
To seek changes.
In such decisions?
In such decisions.
Through ethical?
Through ethical.
And constructive channels.
And constructive channels.
Thank you. Congratulations and welcome back. Would you like to have something to say?
Thank you, Madam President, and other board members and administrative staff, and I should pretend that Dr. Lee. We've got a chance to talk a little bit, so I'm just here, you know, to play a role, whatever I can do to help out during this interim period until you do your election April 7th, and then after you get installation, I'm out. But I'm glad I was able to do this, okay? And so, as the statement I just said, it's wearing the oath, I want to work with that and do the best that I can. Thank you.
Moving on to item four, roll call. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll? Now, we don't occasionally call it, but you call. Okay. Item five. School board presentations. Performance contractors. Our first one will be ESG. Hello. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm not sure what I have to do to...
Well, he'll get you going.
Okay. I included a copy of the presentation for every member of the board and administration, so you have a hard copy to follow along if you can't see the screen or can't understand anything. First of all, I want to congratulate Mrs. Towers. I'm on a city council, and if I had a redet pledge, I would never have been to the conference. So, glad to see you both. They're much shorter than the board.
Thank you. So, while she's getting ready, just a reminder of how we got to today. Back in December, we had the working session, did some visioning, talked about what we want the district to look like. Subsequently, the board gave us permission to do an RFP for its performance contractor. We put out the RFP. We had two entities that put in a bid for it. The cabinet staff, we reviewed their proposals, they interviewed with our cabinet staff, and so we asked them to come and make a presentation to the board tonight so that you will have a sense of what it is that we're talking about, what we're looking at in those presentations prior to the final recommendations coming before the board. So you've got the two vendors up here tonight. ESG, Sylvia is our first vendor.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, everybody. First of all, I want to thank Madam President, the members of the board, Dr. Lee, and the administrative team for the opportunity to be here this evening. We're very excited, a little nervous, but I wanted to introduce you to our company and also to how this energy performance contracting can help the district reach its vision. So I'll just, this is the topics we're going to cover in the next 15 minutes. I hope somebody's keeping time. I'm respectful. I know how it is to have a long agenda, but we'll start off with introductions and then talk about the district's vision. Am I blocking anybody? If not, let me know. Then talk about the reality of the facilities in your district, and then talk about how this energy performance contract, and specifically how ESG can help you move from your vision through your facilities to leaving behind a legacy for your district, the students and staff, the future generations. And then, of course, we have to spend with a plug of, you know, why it fits us, ESG, and then we have time for questions. But again, this is for you. This is your presentation, so if something comes up along the way, you know, please feel free to interrupt. So let's start with introductions. My name is Sylvia McIver. I am a mechanical engineer. I've been in the energy industry for 30 years, and I've, I'm sorry, and I've been with ESG for 10 years, and I've worked with Mario all that time, now pleasure working with Jeb as well. And my job is really to be the customer liaison. So when I work on projects, my job is to make sure that the project goes smoothly from start to finish and, you know, to make sure that things are operating properly well afterwards and we have an opportunity to be your long-term partner. Maria?
Hi. My name is Mario Zalkow. I'm an engineer, well, professional engineer in the state of Illinois. What that means is I can do the design and work from it all in one heading. I've been in the performance contracting industry management conservation for 22 years, and within that 22 years, I've done several projects in South Cook, so that gives me familiarity with the local contracting base and providing people. So I've had relationships with it.
All right, thanks, Mario. I also have, I'm trying to leave this one. All right. The red one? This gentleman, there we go, Troy isn't here today. We, this process has taken us to a qualifications point as far as this RFP goes. So Troy Gray is a project manager who would then come onboard once his scope is being developed, and we're closely with Mario to make sure he has a clear understanding of how the project would be constructed. So I'd like to open up with this presentation with talking a little bit about the district's vision, and more specifically, how the vision applies to your existing building issues. Back in December, I complete the board met for a working session and identify a long list of things you'd like to accomplish, but specific to the building, where the energy issue, equipment, capital issues, carpeting issues. You wanted the buildings to look more consolidated district-wide. You wanted to address ventilation and indoor air quality, and then have an opportunity to review safety of all your buildings. In addition, I saw on there the playgrounds at Wagner and Strasburg as well as your STEM Academy, and that's really where I think a key differentiator is with our company, how we take our project beyond just working in the buildings to leaving a bit of a legacy behind for us as well, and that's when I'll talk about the playgrounds at Wagner and Strasburg and the staff. So I'm going to turn over tomorrow to talk about the reality of your buildings as they are today. Maria?
All right, so as Sylvia mentioned, hers, she may have talked a little bit about some of your visions, so I'm talking a little bit about the opportunities to get you to the vision. We did two things when we visited your facilities. We looked at your energy use, and we benchmarked your facilities with light facilities throughout the country, and then we found areas of opportunity. This right here is a Energy Star report. Essentially, Energy Star is the Department of Energy database where you input data from your facilities, energy usage, cost, size of your building, age of your building, and compares it to light facilities throughout the country with scores between 0 and 100. 0 being the lowest, 100 being the best, 50 being average. So your three schools here are 3, 8, and 17. So that means there's plenty of opportunity to improve your energy consumption and your costs. So how do we do that? We looked at some of the areas of potential improvement. District-wide, many of the buildings are consistent, and they had many of the same with plumbing, water quality, what it does from a maintenance aspect and what it does from a visual aspect. There's opportunity to improve the lighting, heating, ventilation, air conditioning systems, retrocommissioning. What can we do to the existing systems to operate more efficiently? With that building automation, you have multiple systems in your building, which makes it difficult for the maintenance and operating staff to easily maintain the buildings because you had many different technologies out there. Other things we look at is green information technology, building envelope, door seals, weather stripping, caulking, and then carpeting. So that's what we see district-wide, and that's pretty consistent in all the buildings. Now I'm going to talk real, just real quick, high-level about some of the things we saw at individual schools. At Wagner, we had an older roof that's leaking, so there's potential to replace that roof and improve the service life of that facility. And then water quality. I've visited hundreds of facilities in my career, and this is something that is, I've never seen. So from a visual concept, that is, you know, that is, that's striking, so there is area for improvement with that. Over at the Strasburg school, something as simple as a window air conditioner. These air conditioners aren't being used anymore, but when you took some infrared camera, you could see that there's cold spots in that space. Something as simple as pulling out your old air conditioners that aren't being used and putting an insulated panel to improve the indoor air quality and energy consumption in that building. Carpeting, again, pretty consistent throughout the district. At this school, we saw some buckling and carpeting and potential asbestos hazards within those buildings during carpeting. And then the last thing is the Rickover Junior High. Indoor air quality, we heard from the staff and personnel that that's an issue there. One of the things that I wanted to show in this picture is just two different technologies or manufacturers of controls in the building right next to each other. So again, it complicates operation because you have multiple technologies out there. And roofing replacement. This school also had an older roof deck that was slated for replacement. And we also had another picture here that just shows the cold air coming into space that can be simply addressed with things like weather stripping. Low-cost item that can improve both your energy and your comfort of your building. Can I talk to her?
Thanks, Mario. As Mario noted, the existing three schools have deficiencies, and those deficiencies are opportunities for improvement. And these physical conditions that Mario spoke of can have a negative impact on student performance. Studies have shown that these physical conditions, noise, poor lighting quality, and temperature control issues can cause things like, you know, the inability for kids to concentrate. They can impact their performance on tests and homework. And, you know, they can go so far as to cause actual physical conditions and illnesses like allergies and asthma, and then, you know, what does that mean? They're going to be missing school. So when you, when you actually make these changes, you can, you know, when you say leave that, leave a legacy for your district, that is leaving a legacy. You can, you know, make these changes and make these improvements, and the way to do that is through an energy performance contract. So what is energy performance contracting, and how does that take you from vision to legacy? It's mechanism to fix buildings. And the way it works is it's a turnkey design and construction process, so your trusted advisor, your partner, takes all responsibility from the design through the construction, so you're dealing with one entity who's 100% responsible for all those things. And it's a collaborative process with the district, so your trusted partner would be working with Dr. Lee and members of the facilities staff to try to make sure that everything that needs to be addressed is being addressed, and then working with your business manager to make sure that those things that we've identified fit within the financial parameters of the district's budget so that maybe it's going to have to be phased in over time. Maybe you dress the most highest priority items first, but then take time to budget for things in later years. And I think it's important to note that no funding is required through this process until a project is identified and approved by the district. As I noted before, you know, Mario talked about, you know, the building issues, but as I said, when we work with districts, we really want to do more than just a construction project. We want to be part of, a partner in the district, a partner in the community. So we would offer to work with the district to expand your STEM pipeline. ESG has a very close relationship with NIU's College of Engineering and Engineering Technology, and specifically with the dean of the engineering school, Dr. Kommo Vora. And we would like to help South Village Schools connect to NIU STEM pathway. And, you know, they offer STEM camps, and actually, ESG is helping to put some STEM camps in South Cook together. Jeb is here this evening. I know he's working on one specifically for your district to work with, getting about 40 students, if I recall, in a STEM camp in July of the summer. And then you mentioned STEM Academy, so if that's a vision for the district, you know, we, as part of the construction process and part of the design process, we can help set up those projects to be STEM Academy. In addition, we would be, you know, we would be, offer our services to work with the district to install playground equipment through the Kaboom program. So we would help you with grant application, assist with getting corporate sponsors, organize the installation with ESG and community volunteers to get those two playgrounds you're looking at, at Wagner and Strasburg. In addition, ESG is very successful in capturing grants from projects like the ones Mario was talking about, from the Illinois State Board of Education, the Illinois Clean Energy Community Foundation, and the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. To date, over the past six years, we've secured over $7 million for our customers in Illinois. And then we obviously want to promote, this is an opportunity to promote local economic growth in the area by participation of local contractors. So we would collaborate with the district to, on subcontractor selection, and encourage participation by local firms. How many do we have?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, great. So I partner with ESG. I think we're a natural company, you know, our other companies are global, but I think what's important is we're actually Midwest-born and bred, and we are, we have delivered over 500 projects in this area over the past 20 years, and that has saved our customers over $2 billion in energy operating costs. So I mean, that's a big number, one we're very proud of. Not to be shy, we are owned by a public utility, a gas utility called Becker Incorporated that's based in Indiana, and that gives you the, the, I guess, the insurance policy, the transfer of risk, that we're backed by $5 billion parents. And unlike other companies you might be hearing from today, our local office is a licensed engineering firm. We're only one of three ESCOs in the state of Illinois that can say that, and Mario's one of our professional engineers in our office. So this just gives you a list, and I'm not going to talk about some of our key Illinois customers, specifically school districts. We've had multiple phases with many of these customers. We're working on our 14th project right now at NIU, and I think that speaks to the fact that we do a really good job, and they're working with the same team that, you know, I've been there 10 years already. So I think it's important to note that, you know, we don't go away. If there's, if something should come up after the project's completed, you know, we're there to make sure that you're a satisfied customer. And specifically, we've been proudly serving South Cook. So we've had a very strong and successful history with South School, South Cook school districts, universities, and hospitals, including Burbank, two phases at Lincoln. We were just selected at elementary school district 159. Last summer, we delivered Dalton in Prairie Hills. We proudly say Rich Township, if Dr. Lee is familiar with the work we did there, as well as Governor State University and Roseland Hospital. So here's some of our nice awards. You can see them in our paint powerpoint. So key differentiators, we have very strong local references. I think it's important for you to check those or talk to some of our customers, particularly those that you may know. We're product and contractor independent, so the only work we do is this work, energy performance contracting. We don't manufacture any kind of a product. We don't try to integrate our product lines to your building project. We try to pick what's best for the district and for the facilities. We utilize in-house engineers and project managers on our team, and our team is a very longstanding team. It's not a revolving word. Look at our resumes. Mario's been at ESG 12 years. I've been there 10 years, and I can say the same for all the rest of our team members, which, you know, you would have an opportunity to need if we were lucky enough to be selected. Finally, I think we're not too big, we're not too small, we're just right. So with that, I'd like to open it up to questions. How many minutes? We have two minutes for questions.
We have a question. You mentioned the roofing at Wagner School, an older roof. What part of Wagner was that back roof? Because we just had some work, and we paid a lot of money?
Yeah.
To get that roof fixed, and then we were told in the fall that there are still some problems, and then the warranty was supposed to cover it and get that fixed. So at what point, I guess, my question is, what point were you all able to observe that? Was it before or after our repairs?
Oh, yeah, we just had an opportunity, actually, we had an opportunity to visit the schools only after our response was submitted. So when we were there, it was very cold. We were up on the roof, but it was snow-covered. So what we would do in a situation like that, Mario would chime in if I'm incorrect, but we have the ability to take a look at, you know, the, once the snow melts, to be able to look at the condition of the existing roof. We have, you saw that some of those thermal imaging cameras. We take those up there to see, because sometimes what you see is, you know, the roof looks good, there's no holes, but the thermal imaging camera will reveal that water has penetrated the membrane and is causing, you know, the insulation to not insulate the roof. So we would have to do, you know, we were selected, I think the next step in the process is selecting a partner who would do that, you know, deeper dive, the due diligence, and give you more of a definitive solution for each particular school building. But in that case, if there is a warranty, then we'd help you through, you know, trying to make sure that what was fixed, that you, you know, had the warranty stand, and that whoever was responsible would come back. And sometimes it's not the entire roof that needs to be replaced. It may be one wing of the building or one section of the building. So, but there were areas where it's pointed out that there was water coming. Mario, want to add to that?
One of the things Sylvia mentioned about taking that for rent pictures is you can assess the condition of the entire roof. So instead of just saying, okay, let's do a wholesale change-up of the roof, we'll need, you can identify just certain areas where you know you have problems, where there's weather insulation. So you save a lot of money just by replacing exactly what needs to be done versus doing a wholesale change-out.
Anyone else? Mr. Casali?
Yeah, the same question, but I don't want to repeat it. What the president just said, we just spent a lot of money. I think what I'm going to suggest to the administration is to call on those people that did the roof, to let them know right away before the warranty expires. I'm very familiar with that imaging camera that you talked about, because like now, I'm involved in, what do you call it, the public adjuster. The public adjusters, they're able to see through this wall with that camera that you have. So without a doubt, I'm very sure that you guys, you did a very good job trying to see exactly what's in there, because what's behind the wall, sometimes might be some wiring that needs to be fixed and stuff like that. Just when we make it high, you cannot see that. So that's very, very essential. My other question is, you know, when you do improvement in your house for energy, if you buy windows and all that, the federal government give you credit. we'll need, you can identify just certain areas where you know you have problems, where there's wet insulation. So you save a lot of money just by replacing exactly what needs to be done versus doing a wholesale changeup.
Anyone else? Mr. Casali?
Yeah, the same question, but I don't want to repeat it. What the president just said, we just spent a lot of money. I think what I'm going to suggest to the administration is to call on those people that did the roof, to let them know right away before the warranty expires. I'm very familiar with that imaging camera that you talked about because like now I'm involved in, what do you call it? Public adjusters. The public adjusters, they're able to see through this wall with that camera that you have. So without a doubt, I'm very sure that you guys, you know, you did a very good job trying to see exactly what's in there. Because what's behind the wall, sometimes might be some wiring that needs to be fixed and stuff like that. Just when we make it high, you cannot see that. So that's very, very essential. My other question is, you know, when you do improvement in your house for energy? If you buy windows and all that, the federal government gives you credit. Is that, do we have something like that in this situation? That when we spend money to improve, do we get anything? Or do you guys know of anything that we get credit from the government? Or they give us some money?
Yeah, depending on what you select to do, there are grants available. So we had mentioned, we've got $6 to $17 worth of grants in the last seven years. And what we do is we look at all, we have somebody specifically who writes grants in our office as her job is just to seek out grants. So depending on what type of work is being performed, we look at what grants are available for that type of work. So without knowing specifics on what exactly is being done, we seek out all grant opportunities. So that's all part of our service.
Tax credits?
We, we get tax credit.
Okay.
But like you mentioned, I know that something like that is out there.
Right.
Do you, those kind of grant, is it before the job is done?
Yes.
That you have to apply for?
Yes.
And then you make up the difference? Or is it after?
It depends where you head the grant cycle. Typically, you apply for the grant before you do the work. And then depending on where you, when construction starts versus when the grant cycle is, that would, that would depend on when you get your money. But typically, you have to, you have to apply for a grant before any work is started. They won't give you a grant when work is already done.
Do you have any idea like how long does it take? Because in case of your home, that takes place after you've done the work, you got your receipt, and then when you file your taxes, that is when you get the tax credit. But in this case, when, how long does it take to really process the grant?
Grant cycles are typically every year. And typically, you're, you would know you're getting a grant probably within three to six months.
Well, you get, what happens with the grants is you submit a preliminary application. So say you decide you're going to do that part of that roof, or maybe that roof wouldn't qualify for the grant. But some kind of mechanical system, HVAC, whatever the case may be. So you provide a preliminary grant or preliminary application that describes the project. And then you get preliminary approval. So you know that they've set aside that money for this project. And then, once the construction is complete, very similar to a home project, you submit the receipts, you know, what they consider receipts, you know, as far as the paperwork for the grant application. And then the money actually comes quite soon right after. So depending on how long that project takes from a construction perspective, that's about how long it takes. You don't get the money from the, the source until the project's completed.
Do they kind of have an open enrollment period? Okay, from this time to this time?
Yes.
This is where you can apply?
Yes.
And if you don't, then?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Very technical.
Right. With DCO or Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, it's first come, first served. So right now, they're out of money. And the next grant cycle starts June 1st. So it's important, you know, between, like, if the district is considering doing work this summer, to try to work with, you know, pick a partner, pick your project, and then be able to get your, your grant application, you know, as June 1st as possible. Because the sooner that money gets set aside for your project, the, you know, your guarantees doesn't have that money when it's, you know, the project's completed.
One last question, then. The, you said you have a grant writer in-house. Would it take a fee for helping to write it?
No, it's just.
It's just part of the service.
So now you answer the subject.
I'm aware of grant writers that will help you and they get a fee for doing so.
It's part of our service.
I have another question.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anyone else? Thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
There's my thank you line.
Madam President. Could I ask a question? Is there a preliminary cost factor involved in this right now?
No, there's nothing. We've, so far, we've, everything we've done is at no cost to the district.
Okay, so then that?
There's no contract or anything.
Okay, thank you.
So while we are changing out our next vendor, we'll be up here thanking you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Beek.
We appreciate you all. And Seaman will be coming out in just a minute.
You're welcome back anytime, man. Okay, okay, strangers. All right. Thank you.
District of Capitol Four, I didn't want to take up any of their time because their time was finite. But just so that you know, the money that worked for the roofing before at Wagner was just for the blossom section of building. That building has multiple sections of those. It's for the other part of the building. What you all paid for that $200,000, that was just for the blossom section.
There was a section, we actually did a filter at the board meeting. Being on the Building and Grounds Committee, I was explaining to the board that as we did a walkthrough about the leak issue. We went late at night with his hands and he did a walkthrough. And that was not the blossom side. That was one end of the building.
The north hall.
And that was supposed to be.
The patch.
And, right. And we weren't aware that it was going to patch it. We thought it was actually being done. And we found out later, when you came on, that it was patchwork. But now I'm hearing that there's more leaking. So is the patchwork leaking? Then that's where my question was.
Well, that's, that's, we can't do that now because of the weather. But that's, but that's, and I have been identified that we don't have to address.
Okay.
So are we, so we're ready? They're gone?
Yes, ma'am.
So now we can bring in Seaman.
We have another company that's coming to do presentation for the same, same situation. So we'll keep it separate so that, out of respect for each other's presentation and information, so that it's a good conversation. So Scott, she's got to come up here. I'll be to the. I think it's, yeah.
So we are still on item five A presentation. We will now be with Seaman's Corporation.
But thank you so much. I would like to introduce the community. This is Mrs. Crystal Brown Black and Mr. Jonathan Woods, the operation manager. And my name is Shawna Roy. And I'm so grateful for this opportunity. Want to get to know you all about your district, help me my deal to the right service.
She has to speak up.
I'd like to start with a prayer that I was taught when I was a child.
We can't hear.
Hold on, audience, can you, maybe if you stand over there. Maybe they can all hear you.
Okay, except the things I cannot change. Courage changes things that I can. So this is about change for the better. Knowing what you can and cannot do. And I think that's what soft village is to be, it's about change. How do you get pride and progress? So whenever somebody moves into a community, into a new neighborhood, the first question they ask is, what is the school district like? Right?
Yes.
School districts are the foundation for progress. So how do you talk about progress, about making improvements? This is what's going to make people come into your schools, come into your community. Because as you move forward, you're a hypermarket district. The market, the premium of soft village goes up. And so if you want progress, school is the foundation for progress. And there's actively no progress without change. So change, transformation, or in my opinion, I think the appropriate word would be metamorphosis. As you go from a caterpillar to a butterfly, you go from crawling to soaring, you know? To really soar, reach your highest potential. That's what I think is, this project is all about. So when you talk about transformation, this is what I see. The caterpillar, baby steps, moving about your early childhood development program at Dr. Stabby Center. And then your full backstory, when they're really reaching their after, is when they graduate. And you have set them up to have the fundamental, the being right here, a strong sense of who they are. So when they're really fresh, so when they go to college, they can graduate, they can escape the, you set them up for success. And so that's what this is about, community education. We're all in it together. Because as you grow, rising targets all grow. And so soft village, community goes up. That's how we view, Seaman's view, soft village. And it would be such a privilege for us to join you on your journey as you move towards this hypermarket system. Now, Seaman guarantees to exceed expectations. And to do that, you know, our brand is about accuracy. And that accuracy comes from attention to detail through a lot of effort. So the step number one is we first seek to understand. It's so funny, there was a poster about that in the next room we were waiting. We first seek to understand what is important to a district. And we took your legacy goals as our guiding principles. And we broke it down into three steps, and I color coded them. The laptop can never be hit. Into sustainability, academic, and community goals. For example, your full kitchen initiative and your recess playground. To me, that's community goals because health and wellness is about community aspirations. So when you talk about full kitchen, you know, how many people serve, healthy meals to kids? About recess, about playgrounds, it's about exercising, not getting fat. This is exactly what our first lead, Michelle Obama, talks about in the Let's Move campaign. Because, you know, your kids are spending eight hours a day in your school. They get half their calories in your school. Schools are a key place to address children's health. This is where you can do it. We have a huge responsibility and the ability to really make it do it. So I think it's a great opportunity. And we are so excited that you have such progressive views. And so how do you get that? This is Seaman's master plan to obtain the legacy goals you're trying to get. So it's rather simple. Finance is a crucial part of energy efficiency, of sustainability. So what you do is you break up your goals and you put, there's that later. You put the ones that have the biggest savings out of them. And so when you achieve these, the point is take the ones that have the biggest cost right now. The more energy efficiency you become, the less money you spend on utilities. You take that saving and you plug it into your academic program, right? So suppose it's like a phase thing, right? You get this done first. So while you're making these improvements, you have the discussion with your community. Because this is a collective effort. What kind of individuals do they want? Do they want volleyball? Do you want basketball? Do you want, I don't know, hockey, field hockey, lacrosse? What is important to the community? When you talk about brand, you know, you talked about your media center, performing arts. Because kids need creativity. What isn't that you want to get back? So while all this is happening, you have HVAC systems, you're replacing your carpet, you're removing your asbestos, you're making your district healthier, safer, cleaner. Use that time wisely to figure out what's important. And when this is done, you take the savings from here, you plug it back into the academic programs. And that's how you deliver into a high-performance district. So in our humble opinion, your building project becomes a rebuilding project. You're rebuilding and transformation into a hypermarket district. It's a very simple plan, but it works. Because you just follow a step, step by step. We are very methodical. Seaman's has documented over 1,400 projects, 99.8% near perfect success rate in projects. Because we plan methodically. We start with a vision and we follow that through and we invest for the long haul. Let's talk about buildings and safety. For example, this, you currently have a dirt body monitoring all your controls and your mechanical systems, right? Well, you do have a scheduling, but that scheduling can be optimized further to find more savings. And this is at Rego, for example. You can see on a weekend schedule, this is how your electric bills, you know, how much kilowatt hours you're using. On a weekend and a holiday, this can actually be much more tighter. So instead of about 100 kilowatts of usage, it can get tightened down to about 50. So if you're not spending electricity, not spending that cost, that's a saving on one weekend. Well, there are 54 weekends in a year. Count up the savings right there and there. This is not a pretty cash flow challenge. So you have very similar utility savings in all these opportunities currently. HVAC, rooftop units, you know, bathroom, water, all these possibilities there. And we can address it if you pick as a partner, we have that privilege. We will definitely prefer, and these are actually measurable, quantifiable savings. It's a number back. So you can quantify that. And if you, if we are pick as a partner, there are many others very important parts of Seaman's great that makes us financially very competitive. Seaman's is the only company that has its own bank. So we can provide really competitive rates when you go over a project. We also provide a dedicated Seaman's manager to work with Mrs. Williams, your business manager, to find the most competitive deal so you can actually maximize your funding. And, you know, we will investigate grants, we'll investigate pre-bates. See how that applies. Fundamentally, if you look at it, leverage our expertise in all things about these abilities. Efficiency, security, safety. So you can look, this is like a cloud-based integrated platform where you can monitor everything, you know? Intrusion management, danger management, you can monitor evacuation when you have a girl from the comforts of your home or cold day. You can monitor this, you love it, with this cloud-based. More importantly, once again, sick, cost savings. You can monitor your equipment before they go to failure. So it's about preventive measures versus costly fixtures. You know, it's, it's all simply, what is that saying? A stitch in time saves nine? So you can save a lot of money if you just do preventive measures, instead of doing departmental. So it's, it's not very complicated. It's a very simple thing, but sometimes simple things are the best thing, right? Make these improvements here, fund these projects here. Once again, you know, we do a lot of work all over, and you will reference some of them. What we find out is district budget constraints usually make it an either or. Either you can fix buildings or you can invest in classrooms. The way that we work is, it's a both thing. Use your infrastructure improvements to fund your academic improvements as you become a hypermarket district. And please stop me if you have any questions. I would like to be in your space so we don't have any missed indications going forward. Does that make sense? So let's talk about why this has worked. You know, it is a pleasure to learn about the goals that you have. And we are a $111 billion organization in for the long haul. And we really believe in the direction of your goal. And so we want to entrust our reputation, our credibility, in your hands because we really believe in your vision. And because we've done this, we have done this in school districts all over, you know? I don't know. You just pick a woodland, Schaumburg, LeGrange, all these projects. More importantly, they're phase projects over many, many years. We get selective over to do phases more because we are the most accurate, cost-effective solutions. Because you're working with taxpayer dollars. We understand fiscal responsibility and transparency. So let's talk about Ali Seaman's, right? It is the president's award winner for excellence five times. It also happens to be a Seaman's partner. More importantly, it's the nation's first LEED gold district. So LEED means leadership in engineering and environmental design. What it acts, it's internationally recognized. And what it shows to the community is that you're physically What it acts internationally recognized, and what it shows to the community is that you're fiscally responsible. Because LEED buildings are optimized for energy saving, which is another way of saying you are not wasting taxpayer dollars of unnecessary utility bills. Furthermore, for example, LEED shows safer buildings. In our research, we find out, sometimes you have students who come back and complain about headaches or allergies when they come back from summer. Well, LEED buildings are safe, less toxic, so it's a better environment for kids, better environment for the people who work here, right? So it's a win-win all over. But if you have to see, because we are seeing it in terms of soft village, if you have a LEED building, because I researched, there are no LEED buildings nearby. Have you guys seen LEED buildings anytime near, anywhere nearby? Also, if you have a LEED building, that brings prominence to your district. It brings prominence to soft village, and that's how you get market premium going up. So yes, I'm sorry, what is a LEED building? You know, so when you have a building, very good question, you have to check off a lot of things, you know? There are quality things that you have to check off that you have to get, so while you're making improvements, we can help you safely. You should use these less toxic materials, should be more sustainable, sustainable practices, there's a checklist. So while you're making improvements in your building, so if you check them off correctly, and we will help you, you can get that certification, LEED silver, LEED gold, or LEED platinum. So it's something that is like accreditation. There's a list, you have to meet these requirements, and so you get a certification. So if you can, and it's doable, because people do get it done. Illinois First LEED, it's a woodland school district, LEED elementary, that's a Siemens project, so we've got things to do with. So if you become a LEED building, it raises the market premium of soft village. And what happens, it's about community leadership, right? So you can lead by example. So I think it's a really, really good thing, because in the long run, this is how you become a high-performance district. So what happens next? Just like you pursue excellence, so does Siemens. And we get recognized for it. So if you become a LEED building, we will advertise your effort, so you can get that recognition. We get recognized for being one of the top employers. We're recognized by Women Engineering Magazine, U.S. Flat Engineers Information Technology, recognize us as top employer. Furthermore, we have been recognized as the best diversity company by Diversity Careers. And most importantly, since you're doing energy efficiency sustainability, seven years in a row, consecutive years, Dow Jones Sustainability Index recognizes Siemens as the most sustainable company in the world. We are very proud of that. So we walk on top. So how does that apply to you? Fundamentally, Siemens is an engineering company. Innovation is something that we need to be competitive, right? So to get innovative technology, we need to hire the best. And we only can do that if we invest in education, because we have to develop our workforce. That is why Siemens has a long history in investing in education globally. So starting with Menzel Bank, we have a school of science and technology, all the way nationally, from Alaska, all the way to, you know, in your backyard, Evanston, Northwestern University, those are all Siemens project. I need to go with time, because I won't go into details, so I don't get a chance again. So I'll try to hurry it up. Sorry?
We have each person, each group gets fifteen minutes, and that's what we gave the event, told the other clients.
We've got about another minute for the questions. Are your presentation?
So we have done this, Siemens has done work with CPS, because CPS, as you know your backyard, they have a lot of scanner. So they need to work with a company that has an impeccable work history. That's why they chose Siemens, because they have a very clean work history, getting stuff done. And we have invested greatly, invested, which is very, we do a project, we invest money, eleven-year investments supporting them in their education initiatives. Mrs. Crystal Black can answer questions when the question asks at various times. This is the process we follow. We make sure our solutions are accurate financially, technically, and politically. Because it's important, because you're responding to the community. The main thing, you know, like, it's about giving back, you know, that's me up there. And I learned this already prayer from Mother Teresa, because she was in India, from the country where I'm from. And it's to your opening statement, it's about having a meaningful life, being able to give back. And my job, I love working for Siemens, lets me do these things. Because ultimately, work that we do, learning about what's important to students, we do this all along, because this is my way of giving back to the kids. Because I see my kids in your kids. As a mother, I want to make the most nurturing environment around. Because this is what I want for you. We've done LEED buildings everywhere, Harvard, Northwestern, Bellagio, COVIDola, we do it. This is what high performance looks like. But what I want, this is what I want for you. Your architects do this, but this is possible for you. This is what excellence looks like. Everything excellence has a look. When you want to design playground, you can have indoor playgrounds. So it's not only kids can play when it's cold outside, you can show innovation. This is what you want, don't you want your kids? When they see this efficient, highly fiscally responsible brilliance, a kid sees this and thinks, fine. When you talk about a happy childhood, eight hours a day, this is the legacy. Fun, fun, fun for kids.
Yes.
Ultimately, when you do all this, this is what I want for you. You have a legacy, this is my legacy for you. Ten years from now, I want a plaque like this out there that recognizes the stewardship and the forward thinking that you did, because why can't you have a President's Award presence where you can? Because ultimately, when you develop your kids to be good, need to understand, education is the best insurance, don't you read Mr. DeSantis? It is the best insurance around. Your kids need to be financially independent. Because financial credibility, that's what's, I have a daughter, I wanted her to be financially independent. Mrs. Jones, wouldn't you want that for your kids? Who wouldn't want it? And that's what I want to provide. Because you know what, in here, it really is about community and education working together. We are grateful for you. We, you know, we're all working to work with you, and it's such a privilege.
Is anyone have any questions? Mrs. Black can answer questions about CPS, what we've done, investing in communities.
I have questions, but I'd like to go last, because I'm going to have a whole lot of them.
You guys can keep answering.
Anybody have questions before I get started?
It's hot!
I like it.
Oh, thank you, that's so kind. I really like this district, I hope that comes across, I'm so proud of you.
So, I'm the last?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you for your presentation. Great. Can we get a copy of your presentation for later review?
Yes, I can.
These people have theirs here.
Sure, I will be happy to unit it to Superminery.
Okay. Second of all, do you guys get the opportunity to visit the schools?
Yes, we did, when you are a C P L, there was a department.
Oh, visit the schools, okay, great. The other company mentioned that they have in-house someone that can help them with grant right. Do you guys have something similar to that?
We not only have in-house, we have a financial manager who works with Mrs. Williams to book out grants and book out pre-bates. We also have a world-class training facility in town, so your staff can get trained, so you can do each of your fair quality of this process. So if you're talking in terms of how are we going to find funding, we have it in drugs, we're still a victim base. So yes, we have somebody who will find grants, not only this, you know, the senior grants, the C D A grants. We have submitted an offer of grants to help you with your food kitchen, with your playgrounds, yes, we have.
You also, you've also been to mission, you did a turbine, wind turbine down in Park Community College, where we wrote the grant up to a million dollars, so we do this professionally.
Toll grant?
Yes, yeah, we wrote a specific grant, a standalone grant for that, like Dr. Dunbar.
We have plenty of land. Yeah, it's possible, there's right there, on the south side of Chicago, I think around forty-seven or something like that. There's a company that have that, over there, right in the middle, between Ashland and Austin. It's over there, because there's a place over there on forty-seventh and forty-seventh and Ashland, that I go to the meat market, so I pass through, I see that.
If you want renewables to have solar over there, so we have a huge history in renewables. You can look it up, it's all public information. Siemens is one of the most recognized by somebody as the most sustainable company. Wind turbines, geothermal, cogent, solar, we have extreme experience in it.
You mentioned about LEED building, because it's like telling us, well, you know, Coca-Cola, tell me how you make. I just want to, we're interested what you said. When you have such a building, see, my office just moved. Where I used to be at before, I constantly get hurt. That's because of the building, because there are issues. If somebody do anything, I don't want to mention, I can, because they have apartments on top, and I can smell it, I can hear it, and all that and stuff. This also will help with the staff not calling in, that they are sick. And then also help with the health insurance, because the usage will go down, and the insurance company will give us some more money back. Because with U S C A, what happened is that the insurance company have to let you know how much money they're spending on your group, and what your claim is and all that. So when the renewal comes, they have no choice, because the losses, they have to do that. But we have to review this, it's very good for your present, how old is your company, Siemens? I know they've been around for a very long time, probably.
More than a hundred and fifty, in Illinois, it's a German company, been all over the world. It's been, in America, it's like hundred, almost hundred and thirty. I'm sorry, I'm nervous, all my numbers are going through my head, so.
Well, the last number, what is the formation of your company? Is it like, I'm not so sure, this is just from my own knowledge. The way they have like McDonald's, do you have to franchise this company? Or is it you work directly for them, or how does it work?
This, actually, is a fabulous question. When we wrote that proposal, two million dollars in energy savings, it's not like we got that number by acquiring a company and taking that credit. This is all in-house Siemens. So the more important thing is, when we save two million dollars, that means we have the expert. It's not like we bought a company, took that cost money without the expertise. That's two million dollars worth of expertise that is directly available to school. So it's all in-house Siemens. This is not subsidized out to other nonprofits. But more importantly, we hire local contractors. It lets you validate that, it's not a low-will process, it's the lowest responsible winners, because this is how we invest in community. Once we qualify, your local contractors have to trust, because it's about community building, right? So we vet them, if they meet our qualification, we would like them to work on the project, because they probably, their kids probably go here, so they're a best in this to do well, and so the money comes right back to the community. So we do all the work, we work with whomever you like, you can see if they can be vetted. John can talk to that if I could.
Yeah, we, of course, we still, this satisfies our, um, public interest process, public interest. But we are, we are a huge company, we have our own rules. I can't go and just hire a guy like whatever else, you know, Siemens have, you know, children's problems. We are, we have a very high standard of compliance, and, you know, we did our work, you know, we look, but how we let you do this, we come to the community, find contractors who can do the work, find contractors who know the schools district, where we go. Find contractors who work, and we don't like, we don't have to vet everybody. We take qualified, only qualified players, and then we take one that has the most value for the community, for the school district. So we still follow a repetitive process, but we can narrow it down to people who can do the job, we can satisfy. And these much as what we want to review, the quantity we require of all our contractors.
Did you guys get to see the equipment that we have now, like the heating system and all that? Because what happened was, last year, we just gave a contract out, not us, not all of us, as you all know, it's not, everybody in Congress passes for support the law. I was not in support of this company that's called Amber Mechanical. Three hundred thousand dollar contract given by, all we need is four people, right? Four people, me, Esco, I said, we should get new equipment, we should have had you guys yesterday come here to talk to us about this. But the president and her associates and their daughter was sitting, like, this public information, public information is on record. They voted for this Amber Mechanical to shake the filters. Filters for hundred thousand dollars a year, when we could have got you guys and get new equipment for our children and all that and stuff. That's all I, you know?
They don't have to respond to that, because that was in that information.
No, I'm just just wanting to tell me different, Mrs., we are vendors, we can work with any system that you have. We do not view this as putting our expertise in your buildings, because that CPS, it's a Siemens project, it's high-end products. So we will work with the products that work best for your school districts. So we will work with the products we have, and we work with you. Thank you, yes, please go ahead.
I have another question. So, so say, for instance, if we decide we're going to go with your company.
I love you, too.
So, so, so what you would do is, you've evaluated our buildings already, is that correct?
Initial evaluation, if and when, if we have the privilege to get selected, the way that it works is, you know, quickly, we go through a process, where we will go and measure and verify what you have going. I'm right here, right? So initially, we'll do a condition assessment, right? We go and measure and see exactly what the savings can be. We present our findings to you, write down the dollars and cents, and we say, this is the amount of savings that we have, this is the amount of savings that is possible, financially, with your financial standing, with everything that you have, this is the cost of a project that it will take, and how you're going to fund it. It's all laid out for you, because we guarantee the savings. If you like it, and this involves your lawyers, your architects, you work with them, so everything is covered in. You sign a letter of intent, if you like it. We confirm everything, we go and find grants, we go and find pre-bates, we submit the findings to you. At that point, if you want, we sign our contract, we come into the work, approve contract, give you a conscience. Those are the steps. At every step of the method, you have people on your end, working out for your best interest.
So it's for the current buildings that we have that you would improve upon?
Exactly.
Okay.
I didn't know you had your building in the list, you don't, we're not here for that.
Well, I saw all those beautiful buildings, I thought.
Oh, no, because I think one of the things that your buildings have said is, what the goal was, an outside cohesive facade, so fixing the outside a little bit, so making them all look cohesive, beautiful. So there's a cohesion duty going all the way through. So there's equity in every building.
It's like a big remodel.
Yeah, that's what the purpose is, energy sufficiency, exactly. Take what you have, it's like, don't throw the baby with the backwater, because you have such good things, you know?
Right.
You have such nice things, just make slight improvements and that's it. Oh, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, you did, yes.
Yes, all I want is just a copy of the presentation, that's it.
May I please send it to the Superminery?
Yes, we will put it in a weekly update.
I have a question, may I, Madam President?
Okay. Regarding the Siemens, this will be the last question, because we're out to you on now.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to know, in terms of, and I didn't get a chance to talk to the company, but in terms of, one of the things I've seen here is, they have a lot of land. They have, they have so much opportunity here. And I don't know if this is appropriate, but in working with them, do you identify projects, futuristic projects, or how other sources, the land can be used, instead of just, you know, what they have now? Is that something that you would offer, or is that like best-kept-secret stuff, or what, you know?
When you partner with Siemens, we bring all our expertise on hand. So whether you want to use that land, you know, to do a student academy, or you want to build out for whatever is important, windmill, whatever is important to you. We are as a consultancy basis, we consult with your architects, they do the work, we provide consultation. And you have the E section, the mechanical, electrical plumbing, so it reduces your cost. Because the architect would be outsourcing that anyway, with the higher cost. So we do all that, so we consult, it's a completely consultative process. We do not come in here and tell you what to do, because we want to be here for the long term. So we earn the right to do business fundamentally, you earn your trust. I want you to act like you have such respect for your community, because I want to develop a relationship authenticity. So I appreciate these questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to run for the board, while they're sort of wrapping up, if you remember, the impetus of this at the very beginning was to start to plan out ten years from now. So we, so right now, we have no projects at all. What we're saying is, we need a partner, so that instead of us keep kneeling, it doesn't make sense for us. Because that way, if we could have a partner to actually help us map out a long-term plan, help us find financing, and then also help us with the savings, that's huge. So that's why we brought these, these are the two vendors who put in to be a partner. So all we're doing right So all we're doing right now is talking about who we want to be our partner to help us with this plan. Okay? So right now, there's no projects on the table, this is just the partner to help us with this long-term plan.
I have a quick request. Uh, Ms. Lino, if you can just tell me when or how I can get the Board of Education's minutes of meeting of eleven seventeen twenty fourteen, just let me know, I can go on here and get it, yes. When Amber, it was that date, because the president just said, no, that's not true. Amber Mechanical got a contract for three hundred thousand dollars to shake filters in this district for three years, and we wanna see who and who voted for that. Please, that's all I will request. That's all, it's public information, they got the contract, we have all that, nobody speaks until it's time to speak.
Okay, that will be something that's not on this agenda, so it will come on the next agenda, we're sending the board back.
No, I'm just asking for information on how to get that, we can get the information so that it can be public. I'll try to get it.
You can get it on the district website.
Right, exactly. Anybody can get it on the district website, because I don't talk from the side of my mouth, I give you facts. That's what I tell, and the person that was present, because everybody's signing, the people that was present on that day, they sign it, their name will show us, and the person that was sitting in front of them.
We already know.
Okay.
Sharing, we're gonna do for this, all of that.
Okay, we're gonna move forward now, to run item five B correspondence. We do have one correspondence regarding the, regarding the village clerk and trustee Williams with the, with the government, student government day, where the, the district normally gives a donation. But since she's here live, I wanna let, we can give more details from the village clerk, if you'd like to stand and give the detail regarding that letter that was submitted to the district.
Do you want me to read the entire letter?
However you choose, because you have the entire letter, so.
Okay. Well, it would have stated, the Public Relations Committee is busy planning the Student Government Day twenty fifteen. Student Government Day is one thing that we all look forward to every year. Student Government Day will be held on Tuesday, April fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. SA contest winners from McIlroy Junior High are chosen to re, replace the elected officials, department heads, and vendors at the board meeting. It's a very positive event for South Village. Your continued support of our residents and our programs is greatly appreciated. My special plea is to ask that the school district would again like to sponsor any part or all of any of the activities that's below, it's kind of small, so I'm sorry. Um, Student Government Day breakfast, we ask for a hundred dollar donation. Student Government Day pizza party, a hundred fifty dollar donation. Student Government Day reception, cake and punch, a hundred dollars. Student Government Day SA contest winners bowling party and prizes, two hundred and fifty dollars. Or Student Government Day SA contest winners luncheon, two hundred and fifty dollars. Or the Student Government Day dinner, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The Public Relations Committee is pleased to announce the fortieth anniversary of Student Government Day. In recognition of this milestone, we are bringing you back the traditional dinner, which will be held on April sixteenth, two thousand fifteen. The date and time will be determined at a later time. Thanks in advance for all your help that you can provide to the Public Relations Committee in making this the best Student Government Day ever. So this letter was sent to multiple vendors to try to get money in any way, shape, or form we can to make Student Government Day possible, because we lost our funding several years ago, and we continue this project. So our plea to you is if you'd like to participate in any portion of those events, please let us know as soon as possible. However, I did speak to Mrs. Patterson and Superintendent Lee today about possibly moving the dinner into your multipurpose room, which will save us money, we were gonna take the venue out of South Village to another location, it would have cost us more money. So we are trying to work it out, but we could have it here at the multipurpose room to save money, because we wanna give the money to the children, we wanna focus on spending the money on that. So anything you can do, we would greatly appreciate.
Thank you. Member Casado.
I have a question for Mrs. Williams. Uh, for those vendors that you approach, I have a business, I might be interested.
I would be very happy to send you a letter.
What do I get for being a vendor, you know?
It's gonna be a real nice letter, and we say how much I love you. You know, I mean, it's all about the children, so yeah, I mean, thank you a lot. Yes, yes, and actually, I'll tell you what, just so you watch me to make sure you get a certificate, I'll make sure, because it's the fortieth anniversary, I think we're gonna play it up a little bit, and there will be a program book, and your name will be in it. And I'm gonna make sure you get a certificate too. We're gonna have certificates for the kids and the vendors this year, okay? Because of those kinds of money. Thank you, anything you can do.
I'm in.
Okay.
Tomorrow, I'll send you.
I'm in.
Thank you. Moving on, item five C, general discussion, student fees for twenty fifteen through twenty sixteen school year, Dr. Lee. Um, before we brought it to the board for approval for next school year, we wanted to give you the opportunity, if you had any input in regards to changing our fee. Our current fee is twenty-five dollars, and many of our students will have that fee waived. But it is our current fee, it covers consumables, workbooks, um, science equipment. So that, so all we're doing tonight is just bringing it to the attention of the board, because we'd like to start registration for next year in April. So that means that we would be bringing the fee to the board in March, so that we could commence registration, because what we're trying to do is get a jumpstart on registration, so that we make sure that our staffing is much more accurate when we open the school. So that's why it's on the agenda tonight, just for discussion. Mr. Casado.
Yeah, Dr. Lee, do you have a recommendation as to whether, because when I was here, when I moved in this district, the fees was a lot more than what it is now. We reduce it to this, and Mrs. Starwes was part of that, when we did that. And she was also part of making sure that the teachers have their salary equitable to other districts and all that kind of stuff. So my question is, do you think we should continue the way we have it? People have waivers, they can still use their waiver, or should we just say zero tuition?
Well, I do think that this year, we, we were really good about the twenty-five dollars. We, uh, we set it up, we set up payment plans for people, if they needed to do five dollars a week. Um, because we do, we really do need the twenty-five dollars when we can get it, because it does cover, like I said, consumables, um, so we're talking workbooks, items that we have to replace every year. And they're items that really uniquely belong to a child. So this, we really do need to leave in the twenty-five dollar fee. Um, we don't need to increase it, I think that we got ourselves on track this year with collecting it and giving people options, giving them to sign off, we set up payment plans, we contacted them. Uh, for those families who have the waiver, we dealt with that separately. But I don't think it should be raised, I also don't think it should be lowered, I think it should be. My recommendation to the board is that we would keep it at the twenty-five dollar rate.
My last question is, how much tuition did we actually collect? I don't mean for right now, but I would like to have that information, because I don't know exactly how much we are actually collecting. I don't think that in any report in the past.
We'll make sure that the total amount is provided to the board prior to the March Board meeting, so, you know.
Thank you.
Member Howard.
I would, I, I would say we did a twenty-five dollars.
I understand. I agree. So this will be an actual agenda item in March, at the March Board meeting. For action. Item five C two, we're going to skip, we're, uh, we're going to skip at this time regarding reports for Triple I Conference, November twenty-fourteen, Chicago. And there's one more item, item three, the board, uh, I, I sent a message to each board member, you all should have received a superintendent evaluation, evaluation blank form to fill out and turn in on tonight. The evaluation committee consists of the chair and board member Howard. So if you can please turn in your forms tonight, and we will contact you regarding a special meeting that, thank you, that we will be holding to go over, once we do the consolidation and do the, do the extra lead work, we will be contacting you to come up with a better date, unless you all are good now on setting a date for our special meeting to go over the evaluation and bring that thing together. The superintendent will also do hers, and we'll come together, and at one point, Mrs. Howard and I will, next month, in the month of March, sit with the superintendent and go over the evaluation. Is there anyone else that needs to turn in? I've received a couple, so if you have not turned it in, it would be nice to turn it in tonight, if not, if you can get it in to myself or to Member Howard as soon as possible. Okay, I just said. Would you, are you all interested in setting the date now? Would you all like to, us to get that with you, or would you like, can you all set the date now? It would be best to do it now. Today's still work good for everybody. Six, uh, six or seven, we can do it on the, in March. You all on a Monday or, no, we can't do that. We can do the third, if you like, March third, that's a Wednesday. I mean, Tuesday, I'm sorry, because we, we can't do.
We're done, we're done.
So if you offer for a Monday or a Tuesday, whichever day is best, possibly around six o'clock. Tuesday, okay, we have March third. Okay, March third would be next Tuesday. Next week, Tuesday would be good. Okay, six o'clock, at six o'clock, is everyone in agreement?
Except for me, because I have to check my schedule, but you have the majority, once you have at least four people.
I haven't heard four yet, I have.
Mrs. Starwes is available. Mrs. Mary is available.
So next, so next Tuesday, March third, will be our special meeting for superintendent evaluation. Okay, so you wanna go with the ten? March, uh, March tenth is the Tuesday.
Yes.
So March tenth, is this, is the board, yes, is it the board in here, or is this? No, just the board. Okay, okay. Yeah, oh, you're looking at. Because I'm looking, I can, just because we've got a. What, what happens is, the board will meet alone, and then we'll come in later, yes. So we have March tenth, Tuesday, at six P M. You all will be receiving a, another message, this will be posted for the public to know that we will be meeting. Okay. Moving on to item six, committees delegate reports, our finance chair, Member Howard.
Yes. We met this evening at five o'clock in the boardroom, and there were some questions, we did, um, they did answer from Mrs. Williams. And as of February sixteen, two thousand fifteen, the total amount for our fiscal year two thousand fourteen fifteen vouchers that are waiting payment is four hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and forty-one cents. And we have a balance, as of January, our account balance is sixteen million, one hundred eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, so for those in the audience, uh, for clarity, the first amount that, uh, Member Howard, our finance chair quoted, the four hundred sixty-five thousand, that's, those are the funds that we're still awaiting payment from the state, that the state owes us. So we're operating and functioning in our own funds while we're waiting for that money. And then the sixteen million she announced is our current funding balance. Then you'll get more details during the finance report. Item six B, scope, sorry, Mr. Casado.
Well, I just want to comment that Ms. Howard is doing a excellent job on this, uh, finance committee that she shared, because I used to police the S R D, used to watch, because of the jobs you do, I haven't made, maybe I'm just my own work. So keep up the work.
Thank you. Okay, item six B, number green, scope, Dr. uh, Wick is doing that tonight. Um, there was a scope cancel meeting today, and, and all board members, you did get a copy of what was circulated. And just, um, for our community and for the board, just some, some really important pieces to make note of. Last week, um, the governor delivered his budget address, and embedded in that budget address, he indicated that there would be an increase of three hundred million dollars into general state aid. However, the state indicated that for us to actually receive our full amount of general state aid, that they would need an additional five hundred million dollars. So right now, we, we're being prorated at eighty-nine percent of our total we're supposed to get. So even with the influx of three hundred million, we're still not going to be at a hundred percent of general state aid. Um, the other pieces that, um, came into play that impact us, the early childhood is being, uh, reduced or increased by twenty-five million dollars, but our special ed is being increased by two point eight million dollars as a state. Um, a couple of other things that will impact our school district, as well as school districts across the state at our scope meeting. And just so that you know, scope is, um, is our legislative arm that actually provides us information to specifically, um, for school districts, and it's for South Cook. Um, the other piece that, that came out very clearly is, the governor's budget indicated that he is going to be pushing for pension reform. And embedded in that pension reform is a lot of legal maneuverings, and at this point, it has already been ruled unconstitutional, and even if it goes further, they're still saying that the Supreme Court, they believe, will still indicate it's unconstitutional, which means that it comes back around the legislators, and we are very confident that in the coming year, that we're going to see this pension shift onto the school districts. Um, it's been said more than once, um, it's been very clear that Speaker Madigan, this is, was shared with us today, intends to move the cost, the cost shift of the pension from the state onto the local school district. And so we are working right now to be proactive and be looking at what those numbers look like if we have to assume that cost. Um, the other thing that they shared with us today was just the number of bills that are out there, that are education bills, and the House Committee, as well as the Senate Committee for Education, and how they might impact us. Um, there's a number of mandates, um, trying to take away some of the mandates that we are required right now to do that are unfunded, um, looking at some ways to try to help school districts have some flexibility. So there's a number of bills that are coming down the pipe that we are gonna be watching pretty closely. Every year, there's about six thousand bills, and about three thousand of them are directly impacting school districts. So we are, the scope organization really helps us with that. The other piece that I passed out to our board is the school funding reform act. If you were following last year, the Senate Bill sixteen, that was about changing the funding for school districts, and, and they kept saying there were winners and losers, in our district, we were a big winner, we, we stood to gain close to three million dollars. Um, Senate Bill sixteen did not move out last year, so now we're into a new year of legislators. So all those Senate bills from last year that didn't move, they're gone. Now there's a new bill called Senate Bill one, and Senate Bill one is the new school reform funding bill. And even in that bill, we would stand to gain money. The question that is out there right now, though, is will that bill get an attraction and actually get out of committee and pass and actually fund school districts? So there's another document that just talks about that, Senate Bill one, the new school reform funding. And it also includes what's called evidence-based funding, so that the funding is based on your student population, what you, you have to provide evidence that we need additional dollars. So there's a lot ahead of us, um, in the state of Illinois, and it promises to be fast and furious over the next few months. So, there you go. Thank you.
I have a question, please, for Dr. Lee. You mentioned that the state aid is gonna be promoted at, we, we, to some.
Well, it's currently this year, it was eighty-nine.
For this year?
So we're waiting to see what that proration will be for next year, we know it won't be a hundred percent.
Okay, we do also know that the current, uh, school district budget is gonna be in deficit. So is there anything, because I know you always plan ahead. What do we have, or what are you thinking about that's gonna fill in the gap? Because we're gonna be at least eleven percent less, now what are we supposed to get from these things? So.
Well, we budgeted for that eleven percent, and when Ms. Williams does her presentation tonight, you'll see that we've already done some cost savings to try to reduce the deficit even for this year. And as we're making our budget planning for fiscal year sixteen, we're already looking at places that we can start to do some cost saving. But we, we recognize that there's, there's some places that we're gonna have to tighten our belts even more, and it's, it's just. And it's, it's just the only way that we're going to be able to survive. Um, thankfully, right now, we're able to continue to pay our bills, because even, even with our fund balance, the state is still behind, I mean, by months, in terms of paying their bills, but we still have to make payroll. So, um, so we're already looking at some cost savings. We did some this year, and we'll see that in her report. And right now, that's when we're starting to look at as cost savings as we go forward.
I still have a question, but I'm going to wait for Mrs. Williams. Maybe that's going to go to her. If not, maybe it's going to pass back to you.
Thank you. Item six, C, O M A Office, no report at this time. Item six, D and E, Speed and Policy, Vice President Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a reminder for speed, you know, justice will go for everything. We did the rededication for Dr. Janira Walters, and several board members, R S V P, but didn't show. So I just want to remind us to all kind of be, um, a little mindful, because those R S V Ps, they do kind of add us into account, and, and that's paid for, so we can just be mindful of that. Uh, the second thing is, the last meeting that we did for, um, speed, they had their auditors come out, which is legacy. And they've done their report, and we have some financial things going on over there that they are, um, looking into. The, the audit report was okay, but it wasn't, um, what the Super had expected. So, there's been some things, um, looked at over there for that. The last thing is, the original building that Dr. Janira Walters wanted to, um, purchase to renovate for the students who have a makeshift home, has been, I guess, canceled. And they're going to do it in-house at the, um, the warehouse that was purch, purchased at Four Ten Ashland. There is ample space in there to, uh, create this living arrangement, which is going to be like a million dollar savings on their part. And that concludes my report for speed. And of course, Allure is there, um, always open there, accepting donations. But they also have a store that is student-run, and you can go in and purchase. It's, it's pretty nice. I've seen wedding gown, coats. There's decorative items, there are, um, things that the students have actually handmade that for sale. And they actually operate the store themselves, so.
And they have nice stuff.
Yeah, it's Four Ten Ashland. Yeah.
It's worth, it's worth it, and it supports our kids.
Is it, is it inside it, on speed?
It's Four Ten Ashland.
It's a cross from rise.
And that concludes my report. Thank you, Vice President Jones. Mr. Casali.
Yeah, it seems like I have questions for everybody tonight. Mrs. Jones, you mentioned financial thing going on in the state, what does that mean to us? Do we pay membership over there?
We pay for our students that are there, yes, we do.
Okay, does that mean the money is going to go off, what financially?
No, there, there's, um, the cost of our tuition is not affected. It's just, um, they had change in, in leadership, maybe a year and a half ago, with their business managers. And, um, there's been some performance issues, um, with the current business managers. And so, they're taking care of that.
It's a personnel matter.
But no, our tuition is not going to increase anything. We are perfectly fine financially.
Do we know how much we pay our students that we send over there?
That would be GMI land.
Yes, we do.
We do.
Yes, we do.
Okay, let's, if I can put in my question for that, please.
They also rent two of our rooms, or one of our rooms that we go by.
So, doesn't it equate to how we pay them?
Yeah, so we pay them and they pay us a little something, you know.
We pay more to them than we get back from them.
Yes, sir.
That's for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
And no report for policy, Madam President.
Thank you.
Item seven, Director of Instructional Services, your call.
Uh, we've been very busy, uh, getting ready for park, preparing for park. We've had, uh, over ten webinars that we've been attending. Uh, with some of those webinars, ISB and Pearson have both been changing their processes, that they've been, um, working on in procedures. And that's due to, we've been able to take part in the infrastructure trials. Uh, so students have been, uh, participating in the test, testing the test is what it comes down to. Uh, and then after we do that, then there's a webinar. So it's not just us, but it's other school districts around the state as well participating in this. And by doing this, they can find all the little bugs and glitches, and they've been busy working those out. Um, and I'm glad to say that we are ready to go on our end. All of our technology, uh, we're set to go with that. Uh, Special Ed Department has also been involved with this as well. Uh, uh, they, the case coordinators, uh, regarding testing accommodations, uh, things of bad nature, we've been working on those. Uh, some of the deadlines, the end of this week, uh, we will be uploading all of our student information from, uh, Skyward that we have, and that will go up to Pearson. Uh, and then any changes that we have after that, if we have new students coming in, and so on and so forth, then we have to do, do them by hand. Uh, so again, uh, moving right along, we have a couple more webinars coming up this Friday, we have another one. And next week, Friday, is another webinar, just before we, uh, finally do this. So, Rick over, I believe, has about five testing locations. They're going to use the three carts that we've been able to purchase with computers, plus the two labs. And Strasburg has eight testing locations, uh, that they will be using as well, with three carts, two labs, and then, uh, three special education classes as well. Uh, so hopefully, the students will be a little more comfortable, uh, in that environment. So lots going on, uh, something I wanted to share with you briefly, or just, uh, this is going to be silly. Yeah, we won't do all of them, we'll just do a few, just so you can see. Audience participation. Uh, these are a few of the cart samples that we can.
I knew they were going to be like.
They're great, right?
No, no.
They're great, right?
This is math, this is reading card, right, because then you'd have to. Okay, the reason I brought this one up, this is, this is pretty basic, but I wanted to show you the difference with the test. Uh, this one, I'll read it. It says, "For a school field trip, seventy-two students will be traveling in nine vans. Each van will hold an equal number of students. The equation shows a way to determine the number of students that will be in each van." So it shows you the division problem. Then it says, "The given equation can be rewritten using a different operation." So use the drop-down menus, and when we use the drop-down menus here, it's a little bit different for students. See, we get to see right now, as a sample, everything for each one. What they have to do is click on that, and then it shows up, then they have to click on the next one, and that shows up. And they can click back and forth. Um, so using this, what number would go in here? All right. So nine would go in here, and then remember, it's using a different operation, so we're not dividing, we are multiplying. And then the question mark goes in there. So actually, this problem, they're not solving with, what would that be?
Eight.
So, this problem, they're actually not solving with the answer, eight. Okay, it's the whole process of what they're looking for.
That will frustrate the kids, because they're going to want that eight. Where's that eight at?
And then this one is also grade three. Patricia needs to read for one hundred twenty minutes each week. She reads, she read for twenty-six minutes on Monday, she read for thirty-nine minutes on Tuesday, she read for thirty-eight minutes on Thursday. So how many more minutes does Patricia need to read this week? Now, what students are normally used to in the past, and what most of us were probably used to, is now we would have four choices, and we get to click on both. We don't, we don't have that anymore. So even if your math was a little off, on the old test, you could say, oh, it didn't come up, well, this one's pretty close. Not anymore.
See, now they say you can't just click see at the answer.
That's right, that's right. So this is what you would, this is what they have to do. And again, add them up, subtract one twenty, or subtract each, however you want to. Uh, so that's a couple of third grades.
Those are third grade.
Uh, I will show this one quick, we won't work through it right now, but this is a fun one. This will be fifth grade.
Oh, no.
It says, "Janice has a square wooden board with dimensions one foot by one foot." So it's just a foot by a foot. "She wants to make a rectangular sign with dimensions five-sixths of a foot by two-thirds of a foot by making two straight cuts to the floor." "The square represents one foot by one foot square. You may want to use a square to decide where to make the two cuts by drawing two lines." Click on two pairs, so again, they'll use the mouse, and they'll have to click on them to make the straight lines, and where she can make the cuts. And then after you do that, you fill out this part, and you actually have to give the answer on this square feet. Okay? So again, real quickly, you just count over five, I mean, for us, one, two, three, four, five, so you cut straight down. And two-thirds, though, this is the kicker, how do you figure out two-thirds when it's divided into six? So again, the students have to take two-thirds and say, oh, wait, that's four-sixths. And then they can come across four-sixths, and they can cut across there, and now they have that. And then they still have to figure out the square feet part. So a lot of different processes involved with this, instead of, again, just coming up with something simple and giving the answer. Eighth grade will leave that one for now. This one, we won't go through the whole thing, this is kind of fun. Uh, they need to, out of all four of these, out of A, B, C, and D, they need to determine the greatest speed to the least speed. Which one is the fastest, which one is the slowest? And this is seventh grade. So again, they have to figure out, looking at speeds with distance and time, and then put it in the correct order there. And again, they have different things, they have a couple graphs, and then they have tables there. And they have to make it all the same in order to figure out which one's faster. And again, no buttons to click on, you have to put it in order, you click and drag. Um, this one is also similar with, again, reading. But this takes it a step further, this is grade seven, you know, we had it in a previous grade. But now Barbara read the first hundred pages from three hundred and twenty-page book in the last four days. There's a lot more information, so you have to clean out, just what do you need from this? Uh, Colleen read that, Nancy read that. Now what you do, part A and part B, there's a lot of this with the math, part A and part B. Uh, so, looking at this, you need to find the greatest rate. So you need to put them in order. So again, you click and drag Barbara, Colleen, and Nancy up to whoever has the greatest rate the next in the least rate by figuring that out. So that's part A. Then after you figure that part out, you have to move to part B, and see which one would get done first, depending upon their rates, and if you notice up here again, one has a three hundred and twenty-page book, one has two hundred and sixty-page book, and one has a four hundred and eighty-page book. So based on their rates and where they already were at, who's going to get done first, second, and third? So again, a lot of different levels to that, so. If we had more time, we'd actually go through it, it's kind of long, but, um, I just wanted to show you. Yeah? So I just wanted to show you, um, what this will be, what they've been working on.
Thank you.
That's some of the phone calls they get. Who gets them first?
And just, uh, and, and just as an aside, um, I know that the cupcake calculations that happen on Saturday, we're trying to give our parents some experience with what's happening with their children for park. It is, it is not what you are used to. And, uh, as a matter of fact, Scott didn't say this, however, there were twenty-three states that originally signed on to administer the park. Now there are only nine that are actually going to start the administration two weeks from today. And Illinois is one. So we are, um, so we have done, as a matter of fact, um, at the, the House Education Committee, there will be people there who are testifying on Wednesday as to asking the state to collect the data and let this be a learning year for us, and not put it out, to give us a chance, uh, to really get through this and have students, because again, um, Scott's been modest, this has been a bear, because the number of times we tried to do the pilots, and it's crashed, and, and so, we're, we're just, we're, we're crossing everything that I'm right to the knife. We are ready to go, it's not so much us, it's Pearson and the state. That, um, they, they're, they're not, somehow their window to talk to each other is not what it should be. So, we're ready. We, we're doing everything that we can to get our kids ready, but you can see, it's just, it's a different entity.
This will be coming around out next week, so you'll get another one next week, uh, if you have a child in the district. Uh, just some standardized test secrets, some ideas that parents can help their children with. So, again, next week, this will be coming out.
Well, Mr. Strong, I didn't want to leave you out. You, Dr. Lee's just mentioned that out of forty-three states, fourteen already up, out. I gotta do the quick math, play three minutes now. So, what do you think that the state of Illinois is going to do, right?
Oh, we're, we're doing it.
We're doing it.
We're doing it.
Why? We, it, it's part of our waiver, the, uh, for no child left behind. The state of Illinois wrote this into the waiver for the federal government, so we don't do it. We got a very, very nasty letter on January fifteenth, I think, very nasty letter, that basically said, "If you don't do it, we will take your administrator's license. Teachers who don't do it will lose their license." The federal government wrote a letter to the state of Illinois that if you don't do it, we will hold your federal funding. So the state, we're, we're, we're moving forward. And, and, but let me say this, we're going to be fine. We're going to be fine.
Excuse me, I, I know we're in the middle of something, but there's an emergency that just came up. Can you, can we please take a, or can you all approve a two-minute recess? I need to go and deal with our board secretary.
Okay.
It was an emergency right now. Do you want a recess? Can we recess, please? It's okay, thank you, no problem.
Thank you all for resessing with us to take care of a situation. So we'll be able to move forward with our meeting now? At seven, at seven fifty-three P.M.? Yes, uh-huh, based on that. Okay. At this time, I'd like to make, at this time, I make a motion to vote in a secretary pro temp just for tonight, with Mrs. Dolores Green, to finish out our secretary position for the night. Mrs. Howard, second. Thank you all very much, again, for that. Okay. Can we call the roll, please? We call the roll. Mr. Casali?
Here.
Yes or no to, for Mrs. Green to fill in the rest of the meeting? Big bucks, big bucks.
Yes?
Yes. Okay, Mrs. Howard. Mrs., Mrs. Towers? Mrs. Jackford, yes, Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Green, at seven fifty, at seven fifty-five, we'll continue as our secretary pro temp for the evening.
Do you need to sway him?
No, sir. Okay, and we'll move on to item eight.
Okay, and we'll move on to item eight. Chief School Business Official Report, mid-year budget. Go for it, Mrs. Williams.
Just that time of year, it's just about half of a school year. Uh, I'm gonna do just a mid-year review of the budget. Well, I'll do just a little quick budget summary. The budget shows the estimated change in the financial position for the fund balance that from the operations of the current fiscal year. Information summarized by revenues, expenditures, and other financing sources. But in this case, we're gonna just look at revenue and expenditures. And we're gonna look at, uh, kind of projecting where the district financial position will be by end of year. So whether we expect or anticipate improvement or worsening from the original, uh, or the initial school budget. I'll start with revenues. These are the revenues that we budgeted for this current fiscal year. The fiscal year starts on June first of twenty-fourteen and ends on, I'm sorry, starts on July first of twenty-fourteen and ends on June thirtieth of this year. Our local revenue, as you can see, um, we budgeted about four point three million dollars, which is twenty-three percent of our total budget. Our property tax collection out of that local revenue gives three point seven million dollars. And then the rest of the local revenue is comprised of the public personal property replacement tax, or it's better known as CPPRT, special ed, uh, tuition from other districts, which we have very little, interest investments, which have been done down, and the rental income, which pretty much comprises the special ed, um, mental health of the women in the district. And then sometimes we get a little revenue from, um, during the election times when a classroom dues. The great majority of the school's revenue comes from state contributions. In fact, this year, it's eleven, uh, we're projecting eleven point nine million dollars. So just under twelve million dollars, and it's about sixty-three percent of the budget. The general state aid comprises most of it. The general state aid is about nine point seven million dollars, so right at ten million. And then the other part of the state revenue comes from the special ed reimbursements, um, the school lunch and breakfast program, and the girls' and childhood block grant. Then the last portion of revenue comes from federal sources, and it's about two point five million dollars at fourteen percent of the budget. Pretty much all of these are, I'm sorry, are reimbursements. Because for the NCLB grant, which is No Child Left Behind, Title I and Title II funding, special ed, IDEA, and that's for flow-through and for preschool Medicaid reimbursement, the National School Lunch Program. And I say reimbursements because we, we don't get this revenue in these categories unless we spend. So we have to make the expenditure before we get the funding, even for the Title I and Title II grants. So this again is just a pictorial of, um, the revenue sources in the district. Sixty-three percent from the state, fourteen percent is federal funding, and then twenty-three percent of our budget comes from local funds. This is a comparison between, um, what we call the objects. That's a state term under the Illinois Department of Accounting Manual. Uh, and for, and we look at these, this row is considered all the objects, and this is standard across the state. So we'll look at the salaries, the projected, and this is the initial budget. We say it's gonna be about ten point five million dollars. Right now, we have paid out about five point five million dollars. So we've, we've done about fifty-two percent of our budget. The same thing applies for benefits. You can see it was budgeted at about two point six million. Uh, mid-year, we spent about one point four million, fifty, fifty-two percent of the amount. Purchase services, uh, which includes professional development and any, uh, other consultant fees and things like that, was budgeted at three point seven million. We've expended almost two million, fifty-two percent. Supplies and materials, one point one, and we've expended about forty-six percent of that amount. Capital outlay, capital is anything that's generally about two, two thousand five hundred dollars and more for, um, improvements for equipment. We budgeted at one point one million. We've expended one, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, but we've only expended fourteen percent of the budget. Uh, it's not a typical, so we haven't, you know, spent half of the capital outlay budget. We still have the library renovation, which is in progress. And we also have the state's energy efficiency grant that we were granted. We have already received the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the state for that grant, but we have not made expenditures, but that's another work in progress right now. Um, and then we have other objects in this area, and it also includes our payments for special ed services at one point six million, uh, or close to one point six million. We've expended six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, about forty-two percent of the budget. Then for non-capitalized equipment, there would be any equipment that falls within the category of five hundred dollars and up to about two thousand five hundred dollars. Um, we budgeted a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. We've expended fifty-two thousand, fifty-two thousand, or thirty percent of that. And then the last one is termination benefits that for employees who are exiting the district, uh, whatever cost, generally it's, um, payout of sick, sick leave or a pay-out, vacation leave, and we've spent about half of that. And that was actually from the last fiscal year that was building this year. So as you can see, we are just about at the halfway point for salaries, benefits, and purchase services. A little bit under for supplies and materials, which is kind of typical because we don't have the summer school things that would be included here, uh, summer school purchases. And then the capital outlay, and here, we're way under for spending. So we look to spend like about another, oh, two million, that's in those two categories. So at the bottom, it gives the total expenditures that we budgeted at the beginning of the year, twenty million, twenty point nine million. And so far this year, we've expended ten point two million. So we're at just about the midpoint of the budget. Again, this is just a summary of the total benefits, the, I'm sorry, the total revenue and expenditures. At the beginning of the year, we thought that the total, we were projecting revenues at eighteen point seven million. The total expenses at twenty point nine million. And we're projecting a deficit of three point one nine six million. So here is showing what the projected budget was, that's the initial onset and what we actually have spent as of January thirty-first, uh, this year. We can see the budget amount is eighteen point seven million. We've actually expended about nine point eight million. I'm sorry, no, we're total revenues, that's what we've received. And then we've expended twenty point nine million. And here, that's what we projected, this is what we actually spent. We spent about forty-two percent. I asterisk here because here it shows that the revenues versus expenditures, as I showed on the prior slide, was projected to be about three point one nine six million. Currently, we're standing at one point one, um, to the good. However, and that's great, so I don't want to take that away, but I just also want you to, to recognize that we paid more in salaries for the last few months of the year. So currently, and this number is wrong, I'm surprised I didn't catch that before, but I'll call it now. We've actually paid eleven payrolls out of the twenty-sixth for the nine to ten employees. We still have fifteen more pay periods, so you can see right there. The first half of the year, we paid less than half of the payroll. We only paid eleven pay periods. And then in the second half of the year, we'll pay the balance of the fifteen payroll periods. Okay? Um, so therefore, when I looked at it and I did the extrapolation of the incurred salaries, which means that I just kind of looked at, okay, what do we have left to pay for this year? It actually encompasses this one, this whole one million, so that's pretty much, that's down to a zero. Um, and then with the other things, I'm looking at, well, when Dr. Meeke and I talked about it, um, probably right now, I think we can say that that number is probably gonna be someplace around one to one and a half million dollar deficit, probably. Well, um, as Dr. Meeke mentioned earlier, we've done some things that have to reduce the budget. Um, and so that's why we're looking right now at probably about a million to a million five as a deficit. Last year, we came in even a little bit better. We were right at a million dollar deficit when at the beginning of the year, I think it was at, I believe it was close to three million last year. And we came at right, right under a million dollar deficit. So it seems like we're probably on track for the same thing right now.
Okay. I think that's the last one, did it? Oh, it was? I thought you were, I was looking at this. I had a question for you. The, um, very good, thank you, thank you very much, you're awesome. You bring it right in. Even your projections, just being so well, getting so close to the actuals and not, you know, being over. I'm really, really am proud to say that we have an awesome chief official business officer, even though he's a business manager. He has a new title. But I do have a question. I've been questioned several times, uh, for clarity for the community. Even though it's only twenty-three percent, I try to explain that we're about, I usually say about sixty-five percent, but the actual number is sixty-three, so I was pretty close. The twenty, the twenty-three percent, we're going to do property taxes. A lot of community members are concerned about their taxes being raised. They're also concerned about, and then here, their taxes are being raised, even though it's not by much, as you can see. Uh, we're, we're not really getting a big vote, and we're mainly depending on the state. And we already know that our finance chair told us how far four to, four to some thousand that we're behind with the state giving us our money and taxes being our most stable income. And then knowing, when, when the community knows that we're raising taxes and that we're operating in a deficit, but when they know we have sixteen million sitting in our fund balance, it brings up a question mark and a concern to them of why we are not using that money all up first before coming and asking for taxes. Can you give clarity on how all of that works, that it comes together? Of why we don't just use all of the fund balance and just use a little bit outside of trying to save in some other case we have to do the TRS, follow-ups, and have to cover TRS? Can you help clarify that, please?
I will, and I'm sure Dr. Meeke can do and add to this. But this is the way I would explain it. Our district is very dependent upon state and federal money, yes. Right now, we're about five hundred thou, I mean, five hundred, yeah, thousand, over about half million dollars that the state still has not given us. That money is included in these numbers that I'm giving you here, but we don't have that money. Um, and we, and there are other things that are gonna be coming down the line that have to also be included, as Dr. Meeke mentioned today, about some of the other pension, um, which are on pension funding that the district may have to, um, sorry, to encompass in the budget. In a school district, and if we look at just examples of other school districts, the way it works, and especially in Illinois, you never, you always have to have a base of revenue. Always. Now, it may not need to be fifteen million, but as Dr. Rosy had come in and shown us, we're operating, operating at a deficit every year. We have fifteen million right now, but operating at a deficit. I think Dr. Rosy showed us that in five years, we would be at zero. So it's kind of like, and I like to compare it to a home budget. If we're, if you're, if you're in, if you're bringing in, I don't know what number, let's just use one hundred thousand dollars for, for the number. If you're bringing in a hundred thousand dollars in revenue in a year, you're not gonna work on a budget that's a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and expend everything that you have. You're gonna try and keep some things that are gonna be there so that you have support in case next year you don't have a job, or next year you have a home abundance of expenditures. So it's a safety net there to say that you're operating right now at a deficit. And if we continue to operate at a deficit, we will be at zero. And sometimes that's a little bit difficult to see because that's long-term. So if we, if we said this year, we don't want to, we don't want to ask for any property taxes, not at all. We're just gonna operate on what we have. The district would be out of money within two to three years. So I, I, that's a, that's a quick synopsis without me preparing an actual report to show that, but that's why.
And, and I want to add to that, just to think about it this way. If you have a savings account as a homeowner, you are not going to use up your savings account to make your mortgage payment into perpetuity, because your savings account will be gone. So basically, when we talk about our fund balance, that's the account that if we have to dip into it to pay the mortgage for this month, but we can't dip into it into perpetuity to pay off the mortgage because there's no end. In school districts, there is no end. Our mortgage is staff, it's salaries, and there's no end to it. It's not like we can pay it off and it's done. It goes on. And the thing about school districts is they're here for fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty years. So if we use up all of our fund balance now, then we're bankrupt, we're out doing tax anticipation warrants. We've gotta go, I have another superintendent friend who was out borrowing money for their district to make payroll. And so that's when you put yourself also on the financial watch list. Then you have a financial control panel that will come in front of the state and freeze all fundings, no. So what you're trying to talk about, we're doing interventions and support for kids, no, none, none of that. So, um, so I, I just, I, I look at the example of if I have a savings account, I'm not going to drain my savings account to pay my mortgage if my mortgage goes into perpetuity. And that's basically what a school district has to look at it like.
And there are some districts, as Dr. Meeke mentioned, I think there are five, maybe six districts in Illinois. There are six districts in Illinois that cut it too close. And I, I, that's a, that's a genuine way to put it. The districts cut it too close and then ended up in a status that was almost at bankruptcy. And had to get out of that without, now you're going to borrowing, and the great long-term borrowing.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question before we move on? Mr. Casali?
Well, that's, you didn't think, I'm gonna speak.
Oh, no, Mr. Casali.
First of all, we need to change that nameplate to reflect chief, but whatever the state. Because once people go to the website, they go to the website and say, oh, you are making manager. Ah, what does she do? But when it says chief, that means, ah. So, no. Now. The budget we have now, is it reflecting the eleven percent shortfall of the state aid? Because when you did this, I don't know how long ago this was. Is, is, is it reflecting that, or are you gonna at a later time take that into consideration?
And you're speaking of the.
The proration.
The, the proration.
Oh, proration, oh, yes.
The proration is eighty-nine.
Oh, yes.
And we are going to be eleven percent short.
Right.
And also we have the Wagner Alley School. We were, we started as a pilot for the state, and they keep cutting the money.
Oh, for her child?
Right. So we have that too, that we want to make sure that it's going on.
That is reflected.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, that eleven percent proration is, uh, shown in the general state aid. So I projected even before the state had given us the actual numbers.
Okay.
And the actual numbers came in real close to what was projected.
All right. My other question is about the termination of benefits. The termination of benefits that is, does that include the ethemshunt? Do we have to, because most people from their job, when they terminate or whatever, they go to cobra. Uh, cobra means you have to pay hundred percent. So in this case, how, how does it work for the district?
No, the cobra is not included in that because, um, how to explain that? Cobra's not included in the termination of benefits that you, that I had explained up there. That is more for when an employee exits the district, either through retirement or they just leave the district and they have, they want. or they just leave the district and they have, they want to get compensation for their sick time, then that would be a termination benefit. So for instance, when the prior superintendent left, he had sick time and he wanted to.
Cash you in.
And that's a termination benefit. Has nothing to do with the COBRA, because the COBRA would fall under the, the total benefits, that line that said total benefits. And we don't pay extra for COBRA. It's part of our, um, it's part of the medical benefits that Galloway handles for us.
And we, we don't pay anything for that?
The way Galloway set it up, there is a, a third-party administrator that handles the COBRA. And no, we do not pay for the third-party administrator to handle the COBRA. And when employees go into COBRA, they are, they are funding that COBRA themselves.
That's what I was going to say. Somebody's paying for it.
Right.
If we don't pay for it, somebody's paying, who's paying for it?
Yeah, yeah. And that's your reversal, cost of country. Employees have to pay for the COBRA. It's just a benefit that's offered.
Okay. Last year, you mentioned that we were at close to a million dollar in deficit.
Yes.
Okay. Now, we're going to be at least about close to that amount or a little over. Okay, the last year deficit, because when you owe somebody and then you owe again, you don't carry over? Or how does that work out?
It does.
I don't know a lot, that's why I'm asking a lot of questions.
It carries over. In fact, on the fund balance, the state of the fund balance, it goes out, it shows the beginning balance. What happens is that in the this year.
Yes.
That fund balance is going to decrease. So when I look at the numbers here, I'm only speaking within this fiscal year.
Right.
Okay. So if there's a deficit, then that deficit will carry over to the total funds of the district, which means that it will reduce our fund balance going into the next fiscal year.
Wow. What you mean? Are you saying that you're going to take from the fund balance, this fund balance, when I was here, started with about twenty-something million dollars, okay? And we build the multi-purpose units and all that, and the money went down. And we all know that cost of bread is going up, cost of everything is going up. We cannot deny the teachers' increase in their pay. If we're able to do so. And the way I was raised up, you have to guard your parents and then your teachers. Those, in that line, those are the kind of people you have to respect and take care of. Or make sure that, you know, you raise your children to know that they're teachers. After their parents, they listen, they do what they're supposed to do and all those kind of situations. So my concern is, because we have contracts coming up and all that kind of stuff that I discuss out here, but we're going to be able to look out for our teachers when it comes time. Did I confuse you? I don't.
No, no, no. I, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. But I would say that as we go through, um, formulating our budget for the next fiscal year, all that's, all that's taken into consideration for the pot of money that we have. And I believe that you want that.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, we, we are in negotiating. That will, it will be part of the negotiations, I'm very sure.
Okay. Thank you so very much.
Yes, as a matter of fact, thank you. Everything is, is very clear now.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The audience kind of look, recording our reports, considering reports. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Is that a, do you have that accessible, like, of, of community stakeholders, remember, would I see their power?
We can post it on.
You can post it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to, uh, Ms. Smith Johnson, Director of Special Education, item number nine.
All right. Good evening to the board. I just wanted to mention that the Black History Month celebration was a success. It was a great time, and I wanted to give special thanks and recognition to Reverend Jesse Jackson Senior, Mr. Tommy Ford, Mr. Ron Baker Junior, all of our principals, Principal Hanson Patterson Johnson, sound technicians and DJs, all of the board members that was there, my president, vice president, secretary, and on and on and on, and Ms. Sally and so forth and everyone that was there. And I saw a few people in the audience who had to leave. It was appreciated. It was a great, it was a great celebration, remembering the past while shaping the future. And I think that most of the families and the community appreciated the event. Um, in regards to the special education update, it said, it says specialty legal update. It's actually a school and special education law update. So every year, you know, laws change, as everyone well knows. And so, um, often the directors were able to access, and many times the administrators were able to access these legal updates, but I thought it would be beneficial to our district to bring in the attorney and to provide all of our staff with those legal updates. So we pretty much just had hot-button topics and we have had our attorney come out to address some of the, the, um, laws that were being updated, as well as some of the issues that could actually come into play that would affect, um, the school district legally. If you see on the first page, one of the big issues that was going on is I can't breathe. So in that whole slide, they were talking about the freedom of expression, being careful that students may come to school and they display, you know, um, their, their voice to different issues in the district. You know, and I'm grateful that we really don't have a lot of those issues. But, um, she wanted to make us aware of it. We talked about social, um, media, not only for staff and adults, but how it interferes and impacts students. The big issue was, um, bullying. Um, and I think it was important to note that they were talking about special education bullying, that when you, you know, the things that, that students do to students when they have disabilities, that's, that crosses the line. And it's not only bullying, it's starting to become a form of harassment. So she talked about how we should deal with those things. So you have probably thirty, thirty pages of slides that you could feel free in your leisure to read, but I think that it was a, um, you know, it was a great, um, and, and for her to be an attorney that can capture the attention of an audience for an extended period of time, I think it's a great update. She's one of the best, um, in the industry, so to speak, when it comes to presentations. So I think you got the best attorney on our side, so, um, and that's pretty much it with you.
Thank you. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item ten, our superintendent's report.
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Johnson and everybody tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson, you mentioned that, uh, you need the lawyers to come here to update. When do you find that, that when the new year starts or? Because there's been a lot of.
Right.
Calling the lawyers and it's not free. We have to pay for them to come here. It's something that's going to be webinar or is there any other way to get it done without having them to come here and send us a bill?
Well, well, I think that it's important that since we don't call out the attorney, you know, for these type of updates and it covers a myriad of information, it was important. We only have it once a year. And I thought it was a great idea to bring in someone that can speak specific to our questions. And that's one of the things that she mentioned when she started her presentation. She, she indicated that with her being the attorney for the district, she's able to add, answer specific issues that are relative to the district and able to have that interaction with the staff. And it was for the entire district. So it was an opportunity to do our professional development for all staff members. Gen Ed, special ed, administrators, the entire district. So the cost, the savings, when you look at it, from sending someone to an update at one hundred ninety-nine dollars a person versus the entire district, it, it's not comparable. So, I mean, I thought that it was, it was beneficial to our district. And we chose this time only because we had so many other things that we were trying to get out at the beginning of the year, that this was the perfect opportunity, mid-year, starting January, for her to come out and give some of those updates to, to all the staff.
Is this already done or it's going to be done?
Oh, it's done. It's by my notice. It was, um, January fifteenth. It's been happened. It's already, it's been happened. It's been done.
Yeah, I've been here for a minute.
For a minute.
And, and can I also add, though, a lot of times our attorneys will come out and do these kinds of things gratis, for us as well. So we always try to tap into that too, because it's part of their give back as our attorneys. So, um, but this particular one, and it was quite appropriate in January because you're talking social media, a lot of laws have changed over this last school year that people needed to be really updated on. And, and she did, she did a very nice job of engaging an entire staff, all of them, uh, in a, in a short window of time, so.
Well, I wasn't finished, because I heard the sidebar going on. I thought we only have one meeting. But I don't appreciate sidebars going on when somebody else is trying to talk, because I can finish now. I lost my shit of talk. Because I do know that most of the time, the board doesn't know what's going on until it's already done or you receive a bill and the bill is not paid and because you need approval and all that kind of stuff. So just want to make sure that we understand each other.
Mrs. Charles, I'm Ms. Reynolds. And yes, I have a sidebar coming on the agenda. And I have to ask superintendent, I'll talk to him in the agenda. I will ask.
Something that, um, we may want to keep in perspective in regards to having great programs and great speakers to update and bring us to the forefront, especially with so many things happening in the news media that were important to just, uh, the community at large and, and for the staff to be more versed in how should we handle this if this occurs or that. Perhaps bringing it to the board, saying it to the superintendent. And the board being informed of, this is what we're thinking about doing. We're thinking about doing that. We want to do this. What do you think about it? Just information, perhaps bring it to us first so that we're not, uh, at this point, after finding out about it. And because of the cost consciousness and all, I, it sounds like it should have been, and I particularly believe it was from an excellent, uh, session that you had. But, uh, my thought is that bring it to the board first.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, moving on. As we get ready to move in, move on to item ten, superintendent's report. Just before anyone else leaves, because it's a very big cake, we do have a cake, uh, which is re-welcoming member towers back to the board tonight. So if we can leave, we'd like to make sure we can cut the cake and take a piece of cake so that we don't have so much. We are near the end of the agenda. Everything else has kind of come together quickly. So Dr. Mika will look forward and then we'll be moving right along.
Okay, so the first item on my report is FOIA's, and that's our Freedom of Information Act. And we are required to read all FOIA requests since our last meeting. And we did receive a FOIA request from a Katie Drews with the Better Government Association. And she, uh, was requesting the total amount of TRS credible earnings for the superintendent from last school year, the total amount of TRS retirement fund contributions paid for the school district for the superintendent from last school year, and the total amount of TRS health insurance contribution to the teacher's health insurance security fund paid for by the school district from last school year. So, um, and I did find out that she'd asked us for a number of retired superintendents. So I think she's doing some kind of report for Better Government Association. Um, the next item I have is the Alliance Report. And, uh, we had the good fortune last week, myself, President Dan Port, our chief school business official, Ms. Williams, and Principal Johnson to go to Springfield, uh, and to meet with our legislators. And, and we've been talking a lot about this Vision 2020 in our district. We've talked about it since July consistently. And so the amazing part is there were about eight hundred superintendents, school board members, chief school business officials and principals in one room getting the same message. And then they basically sent us out like ants to attack our legislators and talk about the kinds of legislation that we need support with. So, um, so we went out and we actually, we had the opportunity to sit with Senator Trotter, um, with, um, LG Sims, Marcus Evans, we talked to Troy Hutchinson, um, we saw Little Davis, Anthony DeLuca, Chris Welch. And basically, we all, all eight hundred people had the same message. Our message was about specific ideas for legislation. One was about not requiring us to have unfunded mandates as they're putting education bills out. Make sure it's not going to cost us money to implement it. Another one was the evidence-based funding where that, where it's required that you showcase the kinds of evidence your district has to say we need more money. The third one was about, um, teacher licensures and giving us more flexibility with being able to find teachers because they might be in Indiana and they've got the capacity to teach Mandarin Chinese, but it's going to take them forever to get an Illinois license. So those are the three big ideas, um, that came out for this first round. Vision 2020 is really about getting legislation in action by the year 2020 that is clearly associated with what the superintendent, school board, chief school business officials, principals, regional superintendents, what the educators know can help make a difference in schools. So, um, so we brought back the, the booklet for all of our board members. It, it was really an amazing experience to see so many people come together. I think they brought in, uh, Elizabeth Purvis, Dr. Purvis, who is, she doesn't have a title yet. She's from the governor's office, connected to education. And so she got up to talk to us and did her presentation. And I think she got some very pointed questions from those of us who are public school educators, because there's a big push for charters, vouchers, scholarships that direct funds away from our school districts to support our young people. And, um, she got some, some, some pretty pointed questions. It was not the kind of crowd that she should, weren't roaring for her. We also had the opportunity to, to sit together and talk about finances before the governor delivered his budget address and talk about really how the finances in the state of Illinois can actually impact school districts, which is not what the governor's proposing. So, um, so it really is a time that we have to get together and put all of our heads together around one vision and one mission and just all have the same voice. So I don't know if others wanted to chime in about it.
It was, the information was awesome. For me, the takeback was something that not only for the district, for the community, even for one own individual self, I, I tried to find any way to encourage myself and empower myself, uh, to learn more than she was sharing. First of all, it surprised me that the, that the new governor actually wasn't getting any love from anyone. I didn't find actually anyone speaking anything positive about him besides Mrs. Purvis, in whom he kept saying, well, I just been hired just two hours ago. So none, any question, we have, it's only been two hours, there's nothing to be answered. And she said that the governor was for all students, that he was going to increase early childhood funding and that he was going to, not going to make any decisions for the next, uh, six months. He was just going to watch. So I'm trying to ask her this quite, we were out, asking her questions. I asked her questions and there wasn't an answer, but something that really just touched the heart of many. But we had one brave person to speak up. She referred to our, our schools and our students as failing. And you already know what happened, so I'll turn that back over to Dr. Mika. Yes. And she did, uh.
Well, I have an issue with people say failing schools. And so to have the lady from the governor's office stand up and talk about failing schools, because what I discovered, every time they talk about failing schools, they base that on data and that data is about our kids. And so you can't continue to tell our kids that you're failing and then expect us to make a difference for them. So I just had, I just take, I take issue with that and I'm not going to sit around up here because eight hundred people or ten, but we cannot continue that. And my, my big question to her was, when are you going to stop doing that? Because the reality is, those schools that they've labeled as failing tend to be minority, low-income rural schools. And so if you continue to tell those kids that they're failing, how do you ever expect us as educators to help them really reach their success? So we, we, I just had a real issue with it. And, um, and, and again, I think, and Stanford's right, she didn't have any answers for us. It felt like the governor just sent her out there like, look at law, hope they don't issue a law. I mean, it was, it was, I mean, I felt kind of bad for her, but, um.
No, I didn't.
And, um, she can come up failing school. But so anyway, um, just what I think is really important is that our district is one of about four hundred districts at this point that have, that have approved a resolution for Vision 2020. We're all talking about it. It's on our website. We connected to it. Um, we know what the avenues are right out the gate right now. We're talking to our legislator. We're, and they are listening. And I will give them credit, Senator Trotter took a whole half an hour to sit and listen to what we had to say. So, and then they're asking us, because what we said is, So, and then they're asking us, because what we said is we want to be the people you go to if you have questions, if you're not sure, Representative Welch said, will you come down and testify about the impact of charter school funding, how it impacts schools? Happy to do it. So I think that what we're trying to do is galvanize ourselves to be at the forefront of what happens in the state of Illinois, connected to education, so that we can do what we know we need to do for kids, and that's really what I think it came down to. It was an amazing experience, I'm glad that we went, there were a number of other superintendents who were like, thank you, because I told everybody, you have to go, and so people were like, thank you for making us go, because it really, it's a, this was a purpose, they've never seen us down there like this, ever.
It was huge.
They've never seen us there like this, and so we will be back, knocking on their doors, sitting in those committee meetings, because that's the only way that you make the change down there, is, is to.
We did hunt, we hunted a lot of people down, we were like groupies. And then we had people chasing us, we met a friend, and it chased us around a little bit too, so, yeah.
I, I just, one more thing, even though the governor's representative did not give a lot of information, there were some very good speakers there.
Yes.
Say about some very good information about education, and I mean, one that I really found that was very important is that property taxes. We fi, I finally heard somebody who gave me some real factual, evidence-based data about another method of funding education other than property tax, or in addition to property taxes that would really give us a good tax base, so I thought it was very important.
So, so thank you, and thank you, thank you, Dr. Johnson, also, thank you. So, on our website, it's mid-year and the board is engaging evaluation superintendent, and one of the things I wanted to make sure is, I'm going to be posting on our website just sort of a snapshot so that people can see in terms of my goals, I have six goals, and so I will be posting on our website, our first goal is about student performance and academic improvement, and it's focused on our math assessment, and so at this point, we've got some preliminary data from Rikover and Wagner that do show that over 50% of those students have shown some growth, we're waiting to finish up at Strasburg, we still have some makeups to do. We've set up our intervention centers to support students, we've started using our data to have standard support as opposed to just getting tutoring and support and specific standards connected back to Common Core, connected back to the park. We're doing progress monitoring, we've also implemented standards-based assessments where teachers are actually writing assessments based on standards that are connected back to Common Core, back to Park, so we're trying to streamline to increase academic achievement, but utilizing assessments, progress monitoring, intervention support. We've also, this year, and you heard Mr. Johnson talk about the legal update, but we've done a great deal of professional development surrounding student performance this year. We implemented our professional learning communities where they're using data with our data coordinators, we implemented Stride Academy, I appreciate the board for your support, because that has made just a difference in us being able to identify right away standards that kids need help, be able to group kids, get them interventions they need. We've worked on updating our standards, Mr. Strong showed you park assessments, we have been, we have our teachers in institute doing the park assessments, so they can start to see how will this impact our young people. My second goal is in regards to technology, we have completed an inventory of all of our technology in our classrooms, we've developed a five-year plan right now that will achieve a full one-to-one implementation by 2018, 19, and that's like one-to-one tablets, we've connected this to our needs for professional development for teachers, you can't just be, put it in your hand, be embedded in the curriculum. We are electronic park assessment ready, we are ready. A year ago, we were not ready, today, two weeks from today, we are ready. We opened this school year not ready, and March the night will be here, and I can safely say, there are so many school districts across the state that are doing paper pencil. And I was at the SCOL meeting today, and they said, how many of you guys are ready? It was a room full of superintendents, five of us raised our hand. We got it going on the show, so, we are ready. So we added the bandwidth to accommodate that need, I already talked about Stride Academy, also within this technology piece is the summer STEM Academy. We have slots for our young people, and I have a meeting actually tomorrow to finalize it, but it will be at Bloom Trail, our kids will be doing roller coaster this summer. Yes, and they'll also be doing roller coaster, the physics of roller coaster, so, and they'll be doing it, our, our rising eighth graders, so current seventh graders will be eligible along with rising seniors, current juniors at Bloom Trail, so our kids will be connected at a much higher level. The professors are actually going to teach our teachers, the curriculum to administer to our kids this summer, so we're really excited about this. My third goal is budget, you already heard from Ms. Williams where we are in terms of the budget, we, we started to review our budget connected to our programs, so we are looking at our five-year plans and say, rather than just rollover budget, let's look at our five-year plan, you heard from the two presenters tonight, because that's connected back to budget, it's connected back to us being more proactive and more thoughtful about how we spend our money. We've already done some cost savings, which Charlotte, Ms. Williams talked about earlier, we're looking for cost savings as we're starting to look at fiscal year 16, and of course, we're lobbying to stay. Unfunded mandates, give us some relief from that, and additional funding for GSA as opposed to this proration, however they can come up with it, we know that we, especially with that being such a sizable portion of our budget. My fourth goal is professional development, so we've engaged teachers with the teacher evaluation system, we've implemented the Danielson framework, so we've been doing all four of those domains that you'll see as planning, preparation, classroom environment, student engagement, professional responsibility, our administrators are out doing practice walks with them now, the teachers have TeachScape so they can look at videos, they can, so they actually, their professional learning communities are studying each of these domains, because it used to be, it was a checklist and everybody was excellent. Well, it's not a checklist anymore. If you are intending to be an excellent teacher, there is an actual rubric that shows you what you're supposed to do in each of these domains, and under each domain, there's a series of clusters, so it's a, it's a different, different animal for teachers now. For climate, we're doing, we're in the middle of five essential surveys now, our principals administered the Valt Ed, which is out of Vanderbilt, it's their leadership assessment, where we actually get to do an assessment of the principal's leadership and our assistant principals, to get a sense of how is that impacting our climate. And then, of course, our CHANCE program, the institute at the start of the year today, I was at Wagner, walking around doing my reading, and I love, you know, the kids know, we're on, we're on level zero, I mean, that means you're in the hallway, it means you're completely silent, or level one or level two, so just watching it take light and, and really become a part of what we do as a culture has really impacted what's happening in terms of the climate. And of course, our professional development for Park, Stride Academy, and now we have a five-year professional development plan that's connected back to the curriculum that we're working on, technology and student supports that we'll need. So, and again, these are just snapshots, I, the board's going to get like a 33-page self-evaluation, this is just that, what we'll be posting on the website, so the community can see just some of the things we've done. In terms of community relations, we've done a lot so far, our bridges, we've, this will be our fourth edition coming out, we started with our back-to-school badge, I've been to the town hall meetings, we had one of our former students, he was here back in the fall, and he created paintings for the school district, our back-to-school rally that we did with the, the village, the governor was here, we've had our community fest, our Black History Month celebration, our schools now do a weekly school update every Friday, that goes home with children, we've established a Facebook page, we're now starting a little content on it, and I'll be launching a Twitter feed as superintendent that'll be tweeting out, so activities as we're starting to make adjustments and move forward, we've got advisory councils with your meeting, we started parent coffees, so we've just been doing a lot, this is just a snippet of what we've been doing. In terms of goal number six, working with the school board, we have an intense communication, I, we text, we email, we talk on the phone every Friday, did get a weekly update, some people say it's too long, but, I try to make sure that there's immediate follow-up in, in the updates, so if there's questions, we try to make sure that's there, we did the retreat with the board, we've done the Triple I Conference, the Alliance Leadership Summit, we've had the South Cook events that we've been doing, and then our National School Board Conference coming up next month. So, this will be on the district website, and I wanted to share it with the board first, just so that you are aware, that just a very simple update for the community to just get, if you just wonder, what have we done? We've done a lot, and I just want to make sure we shared it out with the community tonight.
Great.
Sorry. That is my report.
Thank you. I am, so fast. Thank you. Yes, it's getting time, yes, it's going, so we want to move along a little bit faster.
Madam President, I have a question too. Because the CEO, you don't understand, you mentioned a weekly report.
Yes.
Of the schools.
Yes.
We used to have a monthly report, and the monthly report gives us how many absentees, how many issues, discipline, all that. I don't think I've been seeing that, is this in place of that?
No.
Because Mrs. Meyer, when she got here, I know that she will have this monthly report, and I make sure I go through all of them, and I come back and let her know that I've done so. So now, we don't know what's really going on besides the one page, we have taffy apple and all that kind of stuff, so please fill me in.
So the, the report that you're talking about is the one that has the discipline data and all that data, which we still do get those reports, and they are in the drop box, but I'm just thinking that maybe we have, we not made more copies? Yeah, we'll make sure, because it's been going in the drop box, and I think you didn't get the hard copies.
I, I don't get the computer and all that.
Okay, we'll make sure they go copies, because they're still doing that, yes.
All right, the next one is about the teachers' union, I wish they, they are here, they're not here, they're gone, the teachers' union filed a complaint against one of us. That complaint has not officially come before the board, and the administration decided, they're going to talk to the lawyer, I don't know who else they've talked to, and now, Ms. Williams is the one doing the investigation. I don't know how much longer it's going to take you guys to come up before us and let us know, because when there's an investigation against anybody, that person should not be in position of negotiating a contract or anything like that, and nothing has been done.
This is a closed session discussion.
This is, anything that concern the board members is supposed to be open session, it's not supposed to be closed session, so this we can talk, we're not talking about any features.
It's not concerning the board members, it's, when you, anything regarding parents or students, it's closed session, we will not go into that right now.
We're not going into details, I'm just asking what happened to, this is not Watergate, the rate you guys are going, Watergate happened, we, I'm very sure most adults here know what Watergate is, okay? Last month, we supposed to know about this, it didn't come up. February, we are here, it didn't come up.
Madam President, closed session, and this is not on the agenda, we cannot discuss this.
It is not, you can discuss anything, because.
No, we're not, we are, we're leaving superintendent's report that was not on here for her report, we're going to item 11.
Madam President, this is because it's on you, you are the one to complain about, that's why you don't want to talk about it, this is a attempt to cover up, and I have to speak up for the teacher.
Madam President, I make a motion that we move forward.
The teacher, I have to speak up for the teacher.
I second that motion.
Senator White's motion.
Madam Secretary, if we please call the.
Madam President, we have some audience people here, you are the one in charge, ask them to sit down or leave up.
Would you please call the.
Okay? Otherwise, I call the police myself, because you did call for this to be in one time.
Well, that's because you asked me to, but, the, when, the motion on the floor.
It's been a motion at a second, please move forward.
The motion is to, the motion on the floor is to move forward to items, to our next item on the.
You understand, you don't intimidate me. I know that's your wife, so you better sit down and sleep.
Mrs. Towers. Mrs. Davenport?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed, motion approved, to move forward to item.
I mean?
No, sorry.
Closed session? Yeah, I'll call that.
That was a motion for us. It was move forward to item 11.
Oh, to item 11, I thought you meant to close session. Move on.
Yes, motion, item 11, discussion of unfinished business and board action. Item eight, is there any further discussion regarding the adoption recommended from press regarding the issue 87 for the October 20, October 2014 for policy seven, code 270, administrative medicine to students as presented?
Madam President, may I just remind the board that at the last meeting, the discussion about this particular policy, you don't have to adopt the press, the press recommendation, the press recommendation has the undesignated EPIPEN, but it was on, it was table for, for a vote, so you don't have to adopt it, just as a reminder from the conversation from last month.
Give me the photo, conversation, if not, let me help.
Can you just expand a little bit on it again, to refresh my memory about this, because I know that the last time we talked about this, it would be an undesignated EPIPEN, the student would have to.
The, the nurse, a qualified health professional would be the one who would have to administer it, and so if, if the board adopts this policy, then it just means that we have to figure out, where do we get an undesigned, we have to get a doctor to say, I'm just going to write an EPIPEN for the district, and we have to do the training. We're covered right now, the state law, the Illinois School Code covers us right now if we have a situation and we have an EPIPEN and we have to use it on our child. If we adopt, the board adopts this policy, then it puts in a whole slew of requirements that we don't have to worry about right now, and it also, fine, this was just for those districts who wanted to get in the business of having an undesigned EPIPEN.
So it's not in our best interest to adopt this?
I, from the conversation that the board had last month, the feel that I got was that the board wanted to not move forward with this press update and to continue to fall under the Illinois School Code coverage.
Thank you. Mr. Kasal.
Well, you have to just say, to clarify, I think Dr. Lee just stated that we just want to leave things the way they are, because there's exposure to liability, and there's a lot of things that needs to be done, so my position on that remains the same, so we just leave things the way they are.
Vice President Jones.
So, under Illinois School Code, we are covered if there is an undesigned EPIPEN that is used on a child?
As long as it is not used in a negligent way. So as long as the person has a reasonable belief that this child needs, that it is the kind of situation they need, and it's a nurse or a health professional who's administered, we're covered under the School Code right now.
Are we going to have an undesigned EPIPEN in the U.S.?
No, we do, we would prefer to have EPIPENS be assigned to the child for whom that EPIPEN belongs. Anyone else? Mr. Kasal.
Madam President, I have a request, somebody standing here is making me very uncomfortable, because I can call the police right now, or something has to be done, I cannot pause anyone's, the only person I know here that has a back pain is Mr. Strong, he's standing up, sitting down, he cannot stand up, or they do. So please, something has to be done now. Mr. Davenport, it's either you take a seat or you go out.
I can sit, Mr. Kasal. I sit down all day long.
I'm very uncomfortable with you standing here, you can go outside, we're outside.
Does anyone else have any discussion regarding 11A, the press plus? No, it's not, I motion to adopt. No, it's not, I motion to adopt recommended changes from press plus issue 87, October 2014 for policy seven colon two seven zero, administrative medicines to students as presented. So, no. Second. Madam Secretary of Justice, would you please call the room? Mrs. Towers?
Yes.
What are we going on?
The administrative medicines as presented. We decided no one, alright, we decided no one down.
We decided a no on this? Because I'm understanding that you wanted to remain the same.
Right, and, and the, the, the press laws would change.
Okay.
Mrs. Davenport?
Yeah.
No. Mrs. Howard?
No.
Green, no. Jones?
No.
Mr. Casali?
Gone.
Administrative medicines as presented.
No, no.
Okay, motion failed. Good item 11A. Item 12, discussion of new business and board action, is there any discussion or removal of anything regarding the consent agenda, item A?
Madam President, we do have one removal, under number eight, under hires, the reading assistant Rick Over that needs to be removed at this time.
But everything else on page six?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Does anyone else have any, have any removal? Okay, if not, I make a motion to approve consent agenda, items one through eight as presented. Open minutes of January 26, 2015, rescheduled regular meeting. Open minutes of February 4th and 5th, 2015, IBB training, accounts payable, January 2015. Position statement, January 2015, payroll, January 2015. Lunch, breakfast, summer report, January 2015. Resignations, one seventh grade reading and social studies teacher. Eight, hires, one art teacher, Rick Over, one fifth grade teacher.
Second.
Fifth grade is Rick Over, correct?
Strasburg.
Strasburg, one fifth grade teacher, Strasburg. Okay. Madam Secretary of Justice, would you please call the room? Mrs. Towers?
For all of these, I haven't been around, so-
I'm staying.
Stay.
Green.
That's you.
That's you. Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Davenport? Yes. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Casali?
Yes.
Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, we're moving on to item 13 and just after this, when we, as we get ready to enter the closed session, if anyone would like some paper, we'll be touching the paper at this time. Right now on item 13, members of the general public, comments are welcome, but will be limited to three minutes each. If you can please stand and say your name for the record and address the chair with your question or concern. If we have the answer now, we will, if not, your information will be taken and if you, someone will get back with you. Dr. Lee will ensure that someone is back to deal with the answer, so, the audience.
Good evening.
Doctor Jones?
No questions, no concern, an invite tomorrow at Strasburg, we're hosting Pop in the Park. I know we talked about parties extensively this evening, um, tomorrow I'm offering two sessions for parents. If you can come out, bring your, you will get your students to come down, the student will earn a pass for no uniform on Wednesday. Our first session is tomorrow for one to two, then we have an evening from six to seven. We're holding three different, um, scenarios so to speak, so they'll get three different trades. One is math, one is in the LA and the other will be the actual sample test held in the computer lab where the parents can actually sit with their students to see what's brought up, a little bit of like what Mr. Strong showed us this evening, but you'll actually have the opportunity to sit at the computer. So you're all welcome, uh, please bring your child, you know, or buzz the office and we'll get your student to come down.
Okay, so you have to call in advance?
No, you just got to do me a tomorrow and the staff already knows that parents are coming in the building or just call your student down.
Thank you.
And then the student will be able to participate with you and the two will sit and work together.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Do they get a pop?
Oh, we, we, pop is popcorn, you will get popcorn in the street. So it's called popcorn, not a park, but we can't eat at the computer lab.
Okay, anyone else? Billy Spurk, you go ahead.
Go ahead. Hello, Billy Spurk, Debbie Williams, part two. I want to learn about tomorrow and I support being one of the five finalists for the Billy Spurk contest. Again, great, great drawings, uh, it was hard to choose, but we do have five finalists. We will be announcing a first, second, and third place winner with two honorable mentions and we hope that we can see your smiling faces there tomorrow along with some parents and the students because it's going to be a great night. And second of all, thank you very much for the invitation to the life history program, it was phenomenal, I was glad to be a part of it. And now as resident Debbie Williams, couple of questions about your agenda. And I wanted to make sure that that was clearly stated, I'm the resident Debbie Williams. Um, I just wanted to know, the public comment portion of your agenda is at the end?
Yes.
Where you've already taken action on your items, at what point does the public have an opportunity to ask questions about what you're going to vote on? At this point, it's after the agenda and my second question, I might as well ask them both, is you don't have any part on your agenda for miscellaneous comments or discussion from your board like if a board member wants to discuss something that's not on the agenda, you don't have a place for that?
Okay, we have, the place for that is general discussion, so there's a general discussion on the agenda.
And that is the part that's on five C?
Yes.
Five C?
Five C.
That's when your board can open up things that are not on the agenda, okay. And a public comment question?
I was calling out, and then the other questions where you, originally you did have the audience to speaker up sooner, but when you speak sooner, we would, we would have, actually have to have you twice.
I remember that.
That we would have to have you twice, which actually also extends our board meeting even longer because if you speak before we actually vote, our voting and discussion is intertwined. So if we call out a subject, we're going to discuss it and then we're going to vote on it. So if we, if you speak before you've heard anything from us, then now you don't know what we're getting ready to say. So when this, at this point, you've now heard everything we had to say outside of voting.
But now we're hearing it after you voted.
Now after we voted.
So we haven't had an opportunity, if, if there was something on the agenda that we wanted to ask questions about, it's after the fact is what I'm saying.
Right, and that's the challenge, we would actually have to go back, back to putting it twice on the agenda at the top and at the end because again, you're going to, if you speak at the top and then we're like, you speak, that's fine, but you haven't heard our conversation, you haven't heard our discussion or even how we voted and then you have to come back again, I'm probably looking into that, um, come back again like now to discuss, okay, why did you say that, oh, oh my goodness, you all voted for that and you all need this, because now that's a whole nother conversation.
But you understand what I'm saying.
I understand your concern.
Informative meeting, glad I was here, learned a lot, just a concern of mine.
Doctor Lee?
I just wanted to add something too, I don't know if you noticed, but one of the things that we're trying to be more cognizant of is putting items on the agenda for the board to discuss and then bringing it the next month for action.
That's what we do, I understand that concept.
Yeah, so that, that's, I'm just pointing that out because even like the student fees, we talked about it and then we say we'll be here for action, even the policy, we've talked about it for several months. So we're trying to be more cognizant of doing that and exactly for the reason that you're talking about. So people can hear that discussion, ask questions at the end of the meeting before it's back on the agenda for a vote in the next meeting.
My point, Doctor Lee, is the discussion is only in one meeting and then the actual voting is done in another meeting and the discussion that people, if they have an issue with what was discussed in the discussion meeting is actually, can't be taken to the end. That's my, that's my point.
We got it.
Okay, alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also had a informative, uh, meeting, you know, listening to what you had to say and I, all the things that-
Could you please say your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry, Judy Cass.
Thank you.
Um, one of the things is, uh, Doctor Lee, you spoke about the medication and the schools and I was very glad to see that everybody voted no for, because who was going to make that decision as to who was going to give something that is not prescribed for somebody? And, um, if anybody needs it, uh, the doctor writes an order for that and that can be brought to the school with all the proper identification and everything on it. So it was a smart move there. Secondly, I would like to know, is there, there's a conference coming up that the, the board is going to be going to? Is there?
Yes.
Okay, who decides who's going to the conference and can anybody tell me what the cost factor is for one person?
The board decides if, if they're going to engage in any conference and we actually discuss it in depth and then we vote on it at the next meeting, they discuss one and they vote on it and as far as the finance for it, that would be through our business manager who would actually go through. I don't believe that's all finalized yet, uh, I see.
Is there a proximity, basically, whatever?
There is, registration.
About five thousand per person.
It's not five thousand per person, it's, um, I'm trying to, I can't remember the registration.
They did a lot of money for us.
Yeah.
Uh, registration's about seven twenty-five.
So the registration is about seven twenty-five and then, um, we have hotel and transportation, so I, I-
Have food. You have to eat.
You do have to eat. Um, so I, my best guestimate would be probably around maybe fifteen hundred to get everybody where they're supposed to be, put them in the hotel room, feed them and get them back to Chicago. Um, but what we do try to do to curtail some of that is we, um, we have some of our meals that are taken care of that is not at a cost to the district. Um, so like I think we've got two dinners right now that we've made sure will be taken care of, not at a cost to the district. So we try to balance some of that out.
In, in speaking about the finances, it's, um, scary. It's scary for a taxpayer who is going to be slammed with some more, um, property tax because the governor is not going to, you know, they're cutting us village-wise a great amount of money. And then when you turn around and the school may be doing the same thing. Our mayor has laid people off, he has cut in any way humanly possible to try to make ends meet where they can. And if it was a board meeting that I was at and they were talking about going to a conference and we're talking about, you know, we might not be able to make payroll, why are we going to a conference? Why, and please, I mean no disrespect to anybody sitting up there, we have a temporary person. Why would a temporary person who's not going to be here after April go on a conference for whatever you're going to the conference for? I mean, the cuts and you talked about it and, and everything you've been going through with the budget and, and trying to make cuts where it's feasible. There are some cuts that could be made, fifteen hundred dollars is not that much money. But if you add that fifteen hundred dollars to something else, it keeps adding up. And you said it yourself, everything counts. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
My tax dollars are important to me.
Doctor Lee, you did not mention that when we go to these conferences, these are the kind of things we learn on how to bargain and all that. The congresspeople, they have like a million or two million to go to Africa, to go anywhere. The senators, they have money to do whatever they want. The state of, I mean, the city of Chicago, the ultimate, they got a million dollars to do whatever it is that they want to do. So we need to wake up and look around us and see what is really going on and all that because over here, sitting here, I get paid about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year just to sit here. We did this training last week, two days of my life was devoted to making sure that the people of South Village, they have a very good, because I'm here to reconcile, to make sure that everything goes smoothly. I'm not on the negotiating team, but I want to make sure the teachers are treated fairly and all that. That's why they appointed me here as a senior board member twice, appointed once. The process of selecting somebody because we were divided, we cannot tell the truth. Three of us are three over there, we are divided to get this moving. The director of, in charge of the school district appointed Mrs. Towers to help us out. We have to appreciate, so when we get over there in Nashville, I'm going to Presley. I'm going to, I'm not a fan of Mrs. Presley, but the district is going to pay for that. That is the reward for being out there, we're not just going to cook ourselves up in the hotel room and just smell, no, you gotta go to Nashville and enjoy Nashville. That's my first time going there, that's what it is, but we bring value, please see that. We bring value to the district. If you don't know what you are doing, how are you going to do it? So that is what this is, without no disrespect to anybody, but I just like to bring out the facts as to what is needed. If you don't get training, how will you be able to do what you do? If you're not aware of something that is going on. Mr. Johnson, want to make sure that nobody breaks the law because I don't have the money to build any teacher house. So they have to know what they're doing, that's what it is. So I just respect that, thanks for allowing me.
Um, Vice President Jones, if you could give me a hand?
I'm sorry, I missed five C, I must have dove off somewhere during general conversation. If you get to make this, but I do have two papers I want to make. The first one is, um, to hats off to Rick Over for cupcake calculations, um, that we did on Saturday. We actually, um, were given a, a paper of some of the questions and we did it in class. Some students were not well behaved, but that's okay, we got our cupcakes anyway. But I took that paper home, they gave us the samples, he did every single step that was done on that board. He did every single step and came up with the correct answer, so, Rick Over, thank you. Last but not least, um, Ms. Judy Cass' comment. December, I was on the, on the fence about participating in Nationals. And, post deal, Mr. Casali, I agree with you, that training is necessary. I originally was not going to go because I too was concerned about the cost of it. But I have a responsibility to the people that put me here to get as much as I can, for as long as I can, while I'm sitting here. So come March, I will be at Nationals. And hopefully, with all my hard work, I will be back in my seat, putting forth what I get from Nationals next year. So I wanted to put that out there, I didn't want anybody else to say, well, she said she wasn't going to go because of money and now she's going, I'm putting it out there myself, Tammy Jones is going to Nationals.
I just, and I just, having been to the National School Board Conference before, I just want you to think about this as taxpayers in this community. You have seven elected officials who are in charge of a twenty million dollar budget that for the most part, they're not, not educators, they're not chief school business officials, they hire us to do that work. However, they have to know law, policy, they have to understand budgets, contract negotiation. And so having been to these before, they will have sessions in every possible realm of being a school board member. So I know sometimes it feels like, why would we do this? However, I have to say when you're talking about elected board, that this isn't, this isn't their job. This isn't what they do by trade, it does give them one place where they can go and it will be like a thousand sessions available to them that they're able to say, I need to know about what's coming down in technology, I need to understand, like there are special that update the laws surrounding social media because if they're posting things on, through Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, they have to know as a board member, what is it that I'm expected to know and be able to do? And then what am I supposed to set policy? Because ultimately, these elected individuals that- Because ultimately, these elected individuals set policy that governs everything that we do. And you just commented tonight about them voting no on that EpiPen. I was like, please have them vote no. But I can't tell them, this is, this is their role. But they understand that, and part of that is going to conferences, going to workshops, hearing other school districts talk about this. And, and the other part that we're trying to, to do also, you saw the people here, the performance contractors, we're trying to put Saw Village on the map. And so the way we put it on the map is we've gotta bring in some ideas that don't reside right in this 14 square mile radius. We're gonna get there, we're gonna map that.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else from the audience before we move on? Great, moving on to item, item 14. I make a motion to enter into closed session at 9:16 PM. Don't move. Second. Madam Secretary, please call the role. Uh, Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Davenport?
Yes.
Ms. Towers?
Yes.
Ms. Green, yes. Mr. Cassali?
Yes.
Motion passed for entering the closed session at 9:16. If everyone can take a sip, one hand.
Please take the man, you need it now. Because we wanna do the face. So, uh, if everyone can get us like some cake.
Okay. I make a, I make a motion. I make a motion to return to open session with no action to be taken at 10:20 PM. Don't move. Second. Madam Secretary, please, please call the role. Mrs. Towers?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Howard? I mean, Ms., I mean, I mean.
Yes.
Ms. Green, yes. Mr. Cassali? Ms. Davenport? Yes, motion passed. We are returned to open session. Item 16, action for closed session regarding our January 26, 2015 rescheduled regular meeting closed minutes. Moving table for the March meeting, 2014. So item 17, I make a motion to adjourn our, our rescheduled regular meeting at 10:21 PM. Don't move. Second. You have a chance to write. You can give it to the medicine team. Can you call the role? Please call the role. Uh, Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Cassali? Ms. Green, yes. Ms., Ms. How, Ms. Howard?
Yes.
Mrs. Towers?
Yes.
Mrs. Davenport?
Yes.
Motion passed, we are dismissed at 10:21 PM.